Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March 20, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counsel Camardo?
Here.
Counsel Cuddy?
Here.
Counsel Resica?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We'll start out with our public to be heard, so clerk, if you'd read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder and pursuant to council rules of procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern-only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council will observe commonly-accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please, either podium, if you would. Thank you.
I'm Vince DeWitt. I live at 54 Francis Street here in the city, and I'm here as a resident. And as a statement of disclosure, I work with Mr. Cuddy at BOSI's. I chew his ear off daily, and I thought I would come to the leadership of my city and chew your ears off for three minutes. Auburn, by its very nature, is a visionary town. We have the sixth-oldest YMCA in the nation. We have the first community college in our state, and we are tied with Norwich, New York, for the oldest BOSI's in our state. Our country and our city are amazing. At the most difficult times, we have pursued and gone after things that we valued. The Transcontinental Railroad was built in the heart of the Civil War when the nation was falling apart. And during the Great Depression here in Auburn, the YMCA was built, Westminster Presbyterian Social Hall was built, and this very city hall was built. And I come to you tonight, I guess, to ask you, as lady and gentleman, to begin a conversation of what our city should look like four, eight, 12 years when your terms of office are over as our leaders. Because more importantly, I'm concerned what our city will look like 80, 100, 120 years from now, based on the things that you decide today towards making our city grow. A hundred years ago, our city fathers, or more than that now, installed a water system that would deliver clean, dependable, potable water. The system's 100 years old. It doesn't owe us anything. It's time to be replaced. But as I watch the banter in the paper, I think the bigger concern for me is that we're not working together to create a city that we want for five years from today and 80 years from today. And I guess I urge you all to work on the water issue, but more importantly, I urge you to share a vision of what Auburn should be and work together to make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening?
Ron Quill, Case Avenue. As the chairman of the Salvation Army Advisory Board, I've stood up here before and asked the same thing. I would request that the people in the city of Auburn and surrounding county donate to the food pantry on a regular basis. We're starting to get a little bit low. Gets towards the end of the month, and people's money and supplies kind of dwindle until they get another paycheck or whatever. So I would appreciate at least one item per person in your household be donated for the food pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
My name is Dave Arnold. I live at 29 Logan Street. I'm president of the Cugee County Labor Council AFL-CIO-affiliated. The reason I'm here tonight is I thought the discourse in the city council would improve after the past election and the swearing-in. I am greatly disappointed, as many of the members have expressed to me also, some of the attitudes coming out of the city council towards union representation. I'm asking that this stops, and you conduct business in a businesslike and civil manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? No one else? Very well, we'll close that portion of our meeting, and we'll move along to the approval of the meeting minutes from March 13, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Camardo, second by Counsel Cuddy. Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Motion to approve minutes from Thursday, March 13, city council meeting. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resica?
Yes.
Well-presented, because there was not attendance at the meeting. Presentation proclamation, first one, our tax cap levy presentation. Laura Wills, is that correct?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to discuss the property tax cap, how it's calculated, and the state credit proposals for this year. Just keep in mind that the credit proposals, they haven't been passed yet, so while they're in the budget, the governor's proposed budget, they aren't actually in law. They're not, they're still only in the proposal stage. The tax cap was implemented to slow the growth of New York State property taxes. As I'm sure you know, New York State property taxes are among the highest in the nation. The cap establishes this limit, and it's a limit on the levy, not on the rate. And 2% is the maximum rate, but it can be lower because the actual limit is inflation, not 2%. One thing I wanted to point out is that the tax rate is a function of the levy divided by the assessed value. So the rate kind of fluctuates based on the levy. It's not necessarily, you don't set the rate, you set the levy. This cap applies to all local governments, except for New York City. New York City is exempt. There are certain narrow exclusions to the cap. The cap can be overridden by a vote of 60% of the governing board, and the cap became effective in 2012. The key components to the calculation include the current growth factor for the city of Auburn, the state calculates that for us, the change in pilots, the allowable tax levy growth factor, and that's for the entire state, and any prior-year carryover. The carryover is based on last year's allowable levy minus any exclusions that they might have had, so you don't get to take those exclusions two years in a row. And it's the difference between that levy that you could have made less what you actually did levy. There's also certain exceptions and exclusions from the tax cap. There's a quantity change if you have a large increase in new property, any torts. So if you have big lawsuits that you're going to have to pay out, you can increase the cap for that without going over the cap. And there's also pensions, pension exclusions. There aren't any that are applicable to the city for 2015, fiscal '15.
So there are none for the city?
Right.
Thank you.
These are the inputs for this year. I actually put together a little presentation so we can walk through the calculation. That's a second handout that I can give to you guys. So this is the calculation. I determined, based on the initial inputs, that our cap for this year will be $12,385,839. And I'm going to show you where I got each of these inputs from. The formula is very basic, but I just wanted to show you where I actually got these inputs from. So we started out with our property tax levied in fiscal 2014, and that comes directly from our budget document from last year, on the next page. And then the Auburn allowable growth rate was actually nothing, so they didn't consider that we had any growth for last year. That comes directly from New York State. For Cugee County, it's 1.0. Okay. So you multiply those two together for your first step. The next step is that we have to take and add in the pilots that we got in 2014. And just so you can see, these are the pilots that were received in 2014. This is calculated by Ada and our charger. Back to that front page. The next thing we do after we add that in is that we multiply that total by the allowable growth factor for New York State. That comes directly from New York State's website. And this year, it was 1.46% for the whole state. And this is specific to our fiscal year. The last piece of this is that we have to subtract the 2015 pilots and add any carryover. Because we didn't raise taxes a lot last year, we do have some carryover that we can use this year without going above the cap. These are our pilots from, for this year. These are our pilots for this year. 527, so you can see who's paying pilots to us. And then I got this information from Open Book New York. So you can see that it was calculated, our cap was calculated before this pension exclusion down here at 12,194. So even though last year we could have levied 12.3, we actually only can use this 12.1 for the calculation. So we have the 12,194 minus the amount we actually levied, which was that second page, to come to our carryover. So that's just how I came to the property tax cap for this year.
Laura, I think it'd be good if you could give that out as a percentage?
Yeah, that's actually approximately 4.9%.
4.9, could you clarify that? 4.9 is what?
4.9% is the... It's the tax cap 2015 fiscal over the 2014 actual tax levy.
Okay.
And you'll notice that that is higher than this 2% cap, but it's due to that carryover that we can use because we didn't raise taxes last year.
Wasn't there a raise in the budget, though?
It was, there wa, I'm sorry, there wasn't a significant raise. Yeah.
Because I think the council raised it 2.5% last year, correct?
It was 1.5. 1.5. And I think it only generated less than $10,000 of...
Okay, but I know there was some raise.
It was small.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on the tax cap before I go on to the proposed rebates?
Will you get into, before we move ahead, will you get into how the reassessment fits into this, or won't you be covering that?
Oh, sure. I can talk about that right now. I didn't prepare a slide on it, but basically, the reassessment, it doesn't have much of an effect on the income to the city, because even though those houses were revalued, we have to stay under that cap. So it's not going to generate, unless we want to exceed the cap and keep the tax rate the same, it's not going to generate a lot of additional revenue.
So additional revenue that's coming in from the reassessment will drop the rate?
Yes. Basically, the rate's going to drop because the assessed value is higher. Does that make sense?
Uh huh. And maybe at some stage of the game, if you get a chance, you could just give us those calculations so we could see them, because I've had some people ask me about it, and they'd like to see...
Yeah, I'm not sure Mike's completely finished, so that's why I didn't put that in.
Or whatever, before we get into the budget, maybe we could finalize of the budget, we could see those numbers.
Okay, sure. Okay. The New York State Tax Relief Commission was formed by Governor Cuomo in October of 2013. It's a bipartisan committee, and the goal of this committee was to target tax relief and create tax relief proposals, and those were supposed to be targeted at individuals, families, and businesses. I'm going to focus mostly on the individual residential property tax freeze. The program that has been most popular out of this is the residential property tax. They're calling it a rebate, but it's really a credit. It's a two-year rebate program to freeze residential property taxes if the jurisdiction stays below the tax cap. That means that all three jurisdictions must stay below the tax cap, the city, the county, and the school district, and we must work together for this program to work. This will lead to up to $1 billion in property tax relief across the state if it becomes fully implemented. To receive the credit, residents must have an income under $500,000, and if fully implemented, the total plan could cost approximately $2.1 billion for fiscal 2016 and '17.
Laura, because all three entities, the county, the city, and the school district run different budget cycles, what is the start date in...
It's fiscal 2014-15.
I'm sorry?
It's fiscal 14-15.
Okay. So regardless of the start date of their individual budgets, right?
That's, yeah, based on what I've read so far, that's...
Okay.
And there's, it's very generic for everything, just because it's not ran into the budget for sure yet, so...
Thank you.
So in year one, the city must stay under the tax cap. The residents would receive a New York State income tax credit equal to the increase in their tax bill. So they're not actually getting a check back, they're getting, they're getting a credit on their New York State income tax return. In year two, the city, the school district, and the county must take meaningful steps towards finding permanent structural savings by sharing services or consolidating. Again, the residents would receive a New York State income tax credit equal to the increase in their tax bill. In years three, four, and five, the requirements are the same. The savings plan must, in the aggregate, save at least 1% in year three, 2% in year four, and 3% in year five. Now, that's not a 1%, it's not a 2% after the 1%. It's all on the, on year two. So it's 2% savings from the year-two levy and 3% savings from the year-three levy. These savings must be applied to tax reduction, and that's how the residents are going to see that savings. So basically, the tax levy would be reduced. You couldn't use those savings for adding jobs or, you know, stuff like that. Failure to achieve planned savings could result in recapture of state aid. As you know, we do get a significant amount of state aid, and they could potentially take it back if we don't meet these savings requirements. One thing to note is that the personal income tax credit, so this rebate they're talking about, would only be received if there's a tax increase. If there's not a tax increase, then there's no calculation of a credit or rebate. The calculation that I did below is based on the city, school, district, and county combined. The rebates on a $94,300 house, which is the median home in Auburn per the census data that I received from planning, would be approximately $98. The above rebate is calculated, assuming the cap is reached by all three jurisdictions. And because I'm not 100% on what their levies are, this is an estimate, so it was approximately a 2% increase. But basically, how the rebate is calculated is, say your tax bill is $100 this year, and it's $110 next year, your rebate is going to be the difference of that, so you're going to get $10 back. So however much your tax bill goes up in the next couple of years, that's how much you're going to get back. Does anyone have any questions on the rebate? There's a few other proposals that I just wanted to mention. There's another residential real property personal income tax credit, and this would be available to people based on their ability to pay their property taxes. So it would be calculated based on their property taxes over their income as a ratio. They didn't give out any guidelines on how much that could be, but it could be up to $500 if this passes. This is only available if the jurisdiction adheres to the tax cap, just like the property freeze credit. There's also a proposed renters' personal income credit, and this would be, would be based on income as well. That would be for people with incomes $50,000 or less, or for married couples, $100,000 The commission is also recommending some business tax relief. They're recommending an income tax credit equal to 20% of the amount of real property taxes to manufacturers, corporate income tax reduction to 6.5%. I believe the top rate is 6.8. I'm not positive on that, but I'm pretty sure. Corporate tax rate for upstate manufacturers, reduction to 2.5%, and they would accelerate the phase-out of the utility surcharge. Does anyone have any questions?
Once again, this is still up to Albany, though. Nothing is, am I correct? Nothing has been determined, and until we see our state budget, none of this will be ironed out until then. Am I correct? And why is it every time the state comes out with a program, it's so complicated? It's, I think they have good intentions when they first come out with the program, but all these things that add on to the confusion and to the loopholes you got to jump through... And I agree, and it still takes a year to really find out what it is or isn't, so... Thank you, Laura. Next, we may have Mr. Andrew Fish from CEDA. Andrew?
Good evening, mayor, and members of council. I also have a presentation for you this evening. I was asked to present to you an update on CEDA, the Cugee Economic Development Agency, and what it's been doing. And this presentation, for any of you that were there, will mirror the presentation that we gave in February at the Wednesday Morning Roundtable. But I do want to first start off by giving you a little bit of a background about CEDA itself, the Cugee Economic Development Agency. As you know, economic development in Cugee County and Auburn has a very long history, and to that point, the Auburn Industrial Development Authority was actually one of the first two in the state established. So again, it goes back to what was being said during the public-to-be-heard, generally very visionary and on the cutting edge of things around here. But for a long time, that was done, even prior to that, in the private sector, and then municipalities got more involved in the '60s and '70s with different programs that came through the state and the federal government. And there's been a variety of different public-private partnerships on economic development that go back over the last couple centuries. But in July of 2009, there was a public forum that was held at BOSI's that the Cugee County legislator held and invited many people from the community to say, what do we need to be doing on economic development, and how do we need to be doing it? And as a result of that, what came out very strongly was, we need more of a unified approach to economic development. We have too much of the, what they were referring to as the alphabet soup, which we still have, but all of the different acronyms, the different agencies, and the different areas in which you would go, the different places you would go physically to get some of these services you were looking for. So as a first step to this, the legislator established CEDA in the end of 2009, and they did it very intentionally in terms of the board structure. There was six members by title for the CEDA board. It was the chairman of the legislature and the chairman of the county IDA, it was the mayor of the city and the chairman of the city, the Auburn IDA. It was the BOSI superintendent to make sure that we had workforce development there, and it was the chamber director. And then the other nine members of that board were made up of people from private-sector businesses from various sectors: education, agriculture, manufacturing, financial services, consulting, and some members at large. So that was established in January of 2010, and it got off the ground, as I said before, as a first stop. They hired an executive director and began work to establish itself as a first stop, coordinating the work of economic development in Cugee County. The idea was that a business would go to CEDA first and then be directed to those resources in the other, in the other departments and the other agencies. In 2011, in February, the chamber and CEDA both co-located to their current location at Two-State Street to try and further some of this, you know, first-stop, putting more services all in one place type of a situation. The Regional Economic Development Council was established in August of 2011, and that kind of changed a little bit the perception of how we were doing economic development. And what I will say about that process, really, it's a testament to how well we were collaborating despite some of the structural challenges and having so many different departments and agencies trying to do this work, because most of the folks on the regional council that we worked with really thought very highly of Cugee County and the work that we were doing in economic development here through that early stage in the regional council. The other thing that happened in 2011 is CEDA produced a strategic plan for Cugee County. It identified three very important sectors. Our strongest, largest sector, which is agriculture, our highest-paying and probably the largest value-per-job-impact sector, which is manufacturing, which we still have a very strong base of. Most people are very surprised to hear we have 3,500 manufacturing jobs in Cugee County, which is quite significant in an area that's generally identified as the Rust Belt because manufacturing has been leaving. And then our strongest, or our fastest-growing sector, which was tourism. And those things came out of significant amounts of public forums that were held, forums, small groups, one-on-one meetings with the consultant that we brought in. So that plan was released. You can find that on CEDA's website. But one of the strongest things that came out of there, in fact, the first recommendation from the consultant is, it's great that you're doing first-stop work, but what you really need to be looking at is one-stop. You need to be able to really coordinate this so that all the services are located under one roof, so that when a business comes, when a customer comes, you don't have any lag time. Even if you're working tremendously well together, if the department's not right there, or if the person you need to deal with isn't in your staff and in your location, that can create some lag in time. And in economic development, when there's 20,000 organizations across the country chasing very few number of deals, let alone those organizations looking at our businesses that are here and trying to convince them to go elsewhere, we need to be very responsive very quickly. In November of 2012, if you remember, the CEDA executive director at the time took another position in Massachusetts and left. In a very short period of time, we were able to strike an agreement between the chamber and CEDA to share executive director services. At the time, the chamber was making some decisions internally that opened up its capacity by outsourcing some of our back-office operations, freeing up some staff to do more of the membership and event focus, and so that allowed me, as executive director of the chamber, to put more focus on economic development. So one of the first things that ended up happening after a few years on the job is I started to see a lot of duplication in services that were happening between the chamber and CEDA, not to mention some of the other duplications in economic development. And so in April of 2013, we formed a strategic partnership committee, which was the executive committees of both boards, board, the chamber board and the CEDA board. And they started looking at the two organizations. And just to show you those duplication of services, I handed you all a copy of our strategic partnership report. That's the bound copy that you have there. And that goes through all of the details of the process that we went through. But these were the shared services that we looked at. And of course, as you would expect, they come through in economic development and advocacy. Member services is really the chamber's role, and so you won't see overlap there from CEDA. So the question became, how do we, how do we reduce this inefficiency? And they looked at four different options for this. One was, you know, what is, what's the opportunity for a complete merger? You know, that was out because of the legal and structural and other aspects of it. Quite frankly, the biggest reason for that is the way CEDA was created. With that public-private partnership at the table, we didn't want to lose out on that. And the chamber, as a membership organization and as a 501(c)(6), would miss out on some of that, whereas CEDA is a 501(c)(3). All of those laws are now being changed, but essentially, CEDA is set up as a charitable organization doing work in the community with economic development, so contributions and grants can be given to that organization, whereas the chamber will be a... and grants can be given to that organization, whereas the chamber will be an association nonprofit, so it won't be tax-deductible contributions and can take member revenues. So the other option we looked at was to do nothing and continue with the inefficiencies. The third option was to carve out these areas of overlap and just say, "Okay, well, you know, the chamber's gonna stop doing all of these things, and CETA's gonna stop doing all of these things, and then they're gonna go in their respective ways." But one of the challenges with that was the sustainability aspect of it. From the chamber's perspective, our membership, you know, the mission of the chamber has economic development right in it. They expect that we're gonna be doing that work. That's why they pay their membership. And on the CETA side, if you're only doing the business service economic development side and you're not working on the advocacy, which is the, you know, the environment for business within your community, you're only, you know, it's almost like treating a symptom without getting to the root of some of the issues. So what happened was, the board decided that they wanted to go, the boards decided that they wanted to go with a joint venture. And so they made that decision after this report came out in August. The boards reviewed them. The boards each respectively made their decisions in September and October. We made an announcement in October about this, and actually, as of February 1st of this year is when the joint venture is fully up and running. So what does that mean? What does the joint venture look like? You have this handout as well. This is our organization chart. And what happened was, is we wanted, there were some guiding principles that you'll see in the strategic partnership report, and we wanted the chamber and CETA to remain distinct, separate organizations. And so what we did is, we actually formed a brand-new not-for-profit. I know it's a little counterintuitive. We're trying to consolidate and we're creating new agencies. But what's happened is, is that the chamber board has said, "You know what? We're gonna fulfill our economic development role by being a part of this partnership." And CETA has said, "We're going to capitalize on the efficiencies that are here and be able to do more with the dollars that we're getting to do economic development and be able to do it in a much better way and more efficient way." So they formed CSS. It's called Kyuga Strategic Solutions. It's a horrible name. It's only a placeholder. Trust me, that's not our long-term name. We wanted something that wouldn't stick, but we had to file our articles of incorporation with the state and become an official entity, so that's what we did. The CSS board itself is actually made up of the executive committees of either agency. So CETA's executive committee and the chamber's executive committee makes up the CSS board. And the reason that's important is that both organizations have equal representation at the table at all times. And what we've done is, all of the staff are now CSS employees. So every one of the staff that you see on that organizational chart get their paychecks from Kyuga Strategic Solutions. And the chamber and CETA have formed a memorandum of understanding, an operating agreement with CSS, and have an administrative services agreement with them to provide that staffing. But in terms of governance and in terms of program oversight, the chamber is very specifically focused on member services and advocacy. And that is why the folks that are under the chamber operations report directly through the executive director to the chamber board, and that is their role. The CETA operations, you'll see there, there's a technical advisor, which is someone we've had on staff since June, and then we have an economic development specialist and attraction startup specialist. Those are two positions that we're currently hiring for right now. We have the offers out. We're waiting to hear back, but we should have those people on the team sometime in April. And all of those three employees are dedicated to economic development, reporting to the CETA board. Now, the interesting thing about this model is, because CETA, you'll see the two call-out boxes above that there, Kyuga County and the CCIDA, those are the contracts that we currently have for economic development, ones with the county to be the one-stop for economic development, ones with the CCIDA to provide them administrative services. Because of the way those funds are coming through, as executive director of all these organizations, I can't pull any of those three people that are dedicated to economic development and have them do something on the member services side. I need them focused on economic development. The three positions that are at the top there, the executive director, communication coordinator, and office manager, these are all three shared positions, which means that all of our salaries, benefits, and costs are split evenly between the two organizations. Now, the one thing I've made very clear to both boards, to all of the stakeholders that are at the table, the majority of my time's gonna be spent on economic development, and there's not an issue with that with the chamber, because that's what they pay their dues for, is to get economic development. So that's where I'll be spending the majority of my time. I've estimated that it'll probably be about 80/20. 80% of my time will be economic development. 20% will be very little to do with membership and more to do with advocacy, and then, of course, oversight of the organization as a whole, administration. So I'm gonna touch on these things a little quick here, because I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time. I see you have a full agenda. But we have two types of services that we offer. Services to existing businesses. We want to help them with growth and profitability. We want to look at project assistance, and we want to help them with education and advocacy. Again, this is looking at the total picture, the one-stop picture with the CETA and chamber all at the table. So we've got cost-savings programs, technical assistance, opportunities that will explore opportunities for them, and we try and connect them within their industries. In terms of the project, because we staff the IDA, we can bring IDA assistance, also local, regional, and state incentive programs. It's our job to stay up to date on those and connect those with the opportunities that exist. Financing assistance, whether that be through the county loan program. We're currently working very closely with Jenny Haynes and working on the city's loan program and promoting that. We also have a micro-loan program with CETA. Education and advocacy, again, our leadership training, industry roundtables, regional promotion of people that are doing business here and trying to connect them with other regional partners that they may be able to do business with. The second type of service is new businesses, and that's relocation and attraction work where we respond to inquiries for potential sites. We go out and we do some targeted recruitment. Once we get our business retention and expansion program up and running with this new hire, we'll be able to identify some targeted supply-chain recruitment. And then new venture creation, and this is more entrepreneurial assistance, helping with timeline and strategic planning, doing needs assessments for them. And then, of course, we have community resources with this joint venture, with this one-stop. We have the Finger Lakes Grants Information Center, which has been heavily utilized by the nonprofit community, as well as local municipalities that are, you know, smaller and don't have, you know, folks who are administering their grants for them and things. We have IGNITE, which is the Young Professionals Program. We are the navigators for the new healthcare exchange for both Kyuga and Seneca County for the small-business side. We do that in partnership with Kyuga-Seneca Community Action Agency, and then we have our Leadership Kyuga Program. So that's a lot of fancy words, but what does it really mean? How does it really work? We take three-step approach whenever we're helping any business. The first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna listen to them. We want to hear what their issue is, what their opportunity is, and we're listening for more than what they're saying. We're listening for what's behind that. We're trying to get to the root of whatever the issue is, whatever the opportunity is. And then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna assess that problem and assess that situation. We're gonna do research for them. We're gonna look at the available resources, look at the available opportunities with other businesses, and then we're gonna connect them with those resources. Now, this could be something as simple as, we print something off and we hand it to them, and we say, "Here's the information you were looking for." Or it can be something as complex as, we're working with them on a project from idea all the way to ribbon-cutting. So that's kind of what we are looking at doing with CETA now. That's where we're at. Obviously, I think there's some important next steps, both working with the city and working with ADA. But right now, we have the one-stop shop. We're gonna be doing some strategic planning for all three organizations this year to try and establish, you know, some critical things moving forward. How is this sustainable? How do we make sure that this is something that works and is it working? What are gonna be our benchmarks for success, and how are we gonna establish those? And this is outside of kind of the established benchmarks within our contracts, both with the city and, or both with the county and with the CCIDA. But this is, you know, organizational benchmarks as well. And then we're gonna look at, you know, what is this joint venture's gonna be called? And is this become an umbrella upfront name, or is it in the background? You know, for example, right now, as executive director of all three of these agencies, most of the time, what you'll see, because with the IDA, it's more in a contractual relationship, my emails will have the chamber logo and the CETA logo at the bottom, list me as executive director, and then it says, "A partner organization of Kyuga Strategic Solutions." So those are some of the questions that we need to answer. So I've taken enough of your time, but I certainly want to field any questions you may have.
Counselor?
Well, it's probably a big question that can't be answered right now.
Andrew can handle a big answer.
Well, it might be not just to Andrew. It can't be a one-stop shop unless it's a one-stop shop. I don't know if this is for us. Where are we with moving things along to join the...
To join CETA?
To join CETA. Thank you.
Andrew, I'm gonna jump on this and correct me if I'm wrong.
Please do, Mayor.
And Mr. Rossi also. The way I understand it, CCIDA is an agency, which is formed, was formed by the county, whereas ADA is an authority formed by state government. So ADA basically, correct me once again if I'm wrong, ADA is in charge of their own destiny. City council does not have any legal influence in regards to ADA. If ADA decides they want to work with CETA or not, that is their call by their executive board. Am I close?
You are correct. You have authority over them in the sense that you appoint their members. However, they would make this decision independent of a council action. But it's a very good question, counselor, and I want to answer you in two ways. One, one of the questions that was asked at Wednesday Morning Roundtable is, "Well, can you really call yourself a one-stop?" Well, for all intensive purposes, yes, because we're actively working on leads that are coming to the city. I mean, I think Jenny has been very clear with you that she's referring stuff to us when appropriate, and we're doing everything we can. And the county did not say, "You're gonna do economic development for Kyuga County, but we're gonna draw this barrier around the city and you don't do work within it." That was never a part of the agreement. It was always doing economic development for all of Kyuga County. With the CCIDA, we actually also have the ability to do tax abatement within the city. The Auburn IDA is limited to within the city. The Kyuga County IDA actually has the ability to do deals all throughout the county, again, including within the city. So if a business comes to us today and says, "We're looking for services," we have the ability to provide those services. And again, we're a one-stop shop, so we're gonna do that, we're gonna provide them those services. Conversations, I believe, are moving forward with ADA. I think there's a meeting hopefully gonna be happening here within the next few weeks where we're going to specifically dive into maybe some of the details of the contract. But again, I don't think that's the final step either. I want to see some sort of a contractual relationship with the city and with CETA. And I'm not saying that because I want to necessarily get into the pockets, but what I want is something that is public and contractual, that is the city saying, "CETA, you're doing our economic development because that's the way we want to do it." Right now, it's happening kind of organically because of the circumstances, but, you know, if there was a windfall tomorrow and suddenly, as a council, you decided you wanted to rehire and restaff and suddenly have 14 people in your economic development agency, well, guess what? You're gonna have more resources, and now we're back to not having a one-stop again because you're gonna be putting your flag out that says, "Come here for economic development," and we're gonna be putting our flag out, and it's not a unified front.
That's kind of, it wasn't just ADA. We don't have any economic development in planning anymore, right? Is that correct?
I think it depends on how you draw the boundaries around economic development, because we certainly facilitate development. We're just not very capable with the resources we have of going out and doing the kind of marketing, promotion, attraction, business support services. But once somebody comes to us and says they want to do a business, Jenny and her staff and all of us work to try to walk them through the system so they can implement their projects.
Oh, no, I expected that. But I was just, no, those, the way we used to...
How I would identify it is, is that there's still ability to be reactive, but there is not any proactive activity going on, and that is something that we are very intent on doing, especially these two new hires. It's all about proactive economic development.
And nurturing the ones we already have.
Correct. That's, the proactive portion of that visitation is extremely important. And CETA's mission, in case anyone didn't know, is to, you know, foster a sustainable quality of life in Kyuga County through job retention, expansion, and attraction. And it's in that order specifically. We, you know, for the mayor and I, who were there in the beginning when CETA was first formed, that was a very intentional conversation we had around that mission statement. You know, it wasn't about job growth at all costs and let's go, you know, attract in whoever. You know, it was about retention, expansion, and attraction.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All set, counsel?
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any questions on the report, please let me know. I look forward to continuing this dialogue, and hopefully, we'll be hearing something about ADA and CETA in the near future, and then, you know, in my mind, that's the next step, and then I'll be coming back to have discussions with you about additional work that we can do on behalf of economic development for the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. There's three different announcements tonight. One, the first is a letter. The mayor asked me to read to the mayor and the council from the Owasco Watershed Lake Association. Dear Mayor Quill and Auburn City Council members, as we are planning the program and multitude of activities for Owasco Watershed Lake Association's 7th Annual Lake Day, Wednesday, June 25, 2014, at Emerson Park, we are reaching out to our elected officials and other community leaders. Please save the date and consider this your initial invitation to participate with us on Lake Day. In the pavilion at Emerson Park, our resource fair will run from 3:00 p.m. till 5:00 p.m. Our speaker portion, which will highlight the lake's water quality problems and possible solutions, will then run from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. At 5:00 p.m., you are certainly offered a few minutes to address the audience if you desire. Our planning committee will keep you informed as the event date nears. We hope you will be able to attend. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Charlie Green, President of the Owasco Watershed Lake Association, and Rick Nelson, their Lake Day Planning Committee Chairman. Secondly, from the city electric board, notice of semi-annual interview and exam for electrical licenses. Application for electrical licenses must be filed in person at the April 9, 2014 Electric Board Meeting, which will be held at 5:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council Chamber Conference Room on the first floor of 24th South Street. The exam itself will be then held in May, on May 14, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. in the same location. Applications for the exam can be obtained at the code enforcement office here at City Hall. And thirdly, to begin preparation for the fiscal year 2014-2015 City of Auburn budget, city council is conducting initial line-by-line reviews of the city's budget during special meetings scheduled, and the next special meeting is scheduled for this Saturday, March 22nd, 9:00 a.m. here in the council chambers at City Hall. They will review the Department of Engineering, city manager, city council, and mayor budget, and outside boards and commissions of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. City managers' report?
Mayor, I have a few items. I'd like to begin with the phone system, which has garnered a lot of unexpected attention, but I'd just like to do a quick recap so everybody knows what really happened. In October of 2013, the city entered into an agreement with a company called Spyglass to audit our phone lines, to find out if we're using all of our phone lines and if we're getting charged the proper rates and so forth. In December of 2013, Spyglass identified 161 phone and data lines that were of questionable use. And I say questionable because we couldn't confirm at the time that those lines were all able to be shut off. So what I did was, we sent an email to all city employees, and we said, "These are lines that we think are underutilized or not used at all. Please respond with anything on this list that we should not shut off." So we did that, and then we contacted Spyglass again, and on January 19, they began working with our phone carrier Verizon to start turning off phone lines that we confirmed were of not any continuing value. For example, we found phone lines connected and were being billed for, to vacant lots where buildings had once existed, to phone boxes on street corners that no longer existed, items like that. And when we started doing the shut-offs, there were some lines we didn't know what they actually went to. So Spyglass, of course, said they'd been through this before. It's a simple matter. You know, you tell us if we, you know, turned off something that goes to a fax machine or maybe an alarm or something that was hard to trace originally, and we'll give a work order and we'll get those turned back on. So that continued on through January and February. And so there was, there were lines shut off, there were some restored as we found out what they were connected to and that we did need them. February 26, however, we identified that the city voicemail system wasn't working. And for those familiar with voicemail, it really isn't a system, as we learned, that's resident here in City Hall. It's a centralized phone voicemail box system in the Verizon telephone offices. So that was identified on February 26. And then, since that time, there were efforts to restore voicemail being made by our audit firm, and, you know, three or four emails a day to various people at Verizon. Our IT staff, Linda DeOrio, was working on this as well. And we were, first of all, finally, when people started to conclude what had gone wrong, they told us, "Well, you have an old system. It was grandfathered in. Those disconnections can't, you know, we can't reestablish that." So we were connected with sales engineer on March 7. So we were connected with Sales Engineer on March 7, gave us a proposal on March 11 to replace 60 phones and other equipment at a cost of $8,600 and a new monthly service fee of $1,276. It would also take 16 days to implement that. It was about that time we did a press release early, and then we did a later one to the public saying, if you're trying to reach the city and leave a message in a voicemail, we have some alternatives because the system isn't working. That's when we got some media attention, and on March 12, the day after, I think it was the citizen that published the story, there was a Verizon representative in my office at 8:00 in the morning. It turns out, there are some people that work for Verizon in the City of Auburn, they were not aware of the problem because these things had been, we'd been told to handle them through corporate and regional offices. And to make a long story short, by the end of the day, he had worked with headquarters, and they'd restored the voicemail. So that's, that's what happened. At the end of this project, of the 161 lines, 120 of them were turned off, seven data lines were turned off. The estimated annual savings is about $40,000 a year. This effort also prompted me to form a little working group, and we've met with a couple telephone vendors to see if we could update our existing phone system without any additional costs, so we're going to explore that, and we'll come back to council with anything that looks favorable on that. It was a week of meetings. We met with a company that specializes in leasing highly specialized equipment to repair potholes, and I think, and I was favorably impressed with what I saw. It's equipment that we would lease, we wouldn't have to purchase. The pothole repairs are made with a hot mix, which we were told should last about a year. Our cold mix repairs, for lucky, sometimes may last a week. Oftentimes, snow plows and traffic over them, the cold patch repairs don't even last that long. So what we're trying to do is arrange a demonstration so City Council and city staff can see this equipment in operation, and we'll make a decision whether that is something that we could do. Because this winter's been very difficult on our streets, as everyone who travels the Auburn streets knows, and we're going to have to do some restoration. I don't think we're going to be able to afford to do full street improvements on all the bad streets. We met with, I met with an efficiency consultant talking about possible services to the city. That's very preliminary. I'll come back to the council if that looks favorable. Mark O. from Engineering, I met with a GIS professor at Keuga Community College. We're pushing our geographic information systems as a platform to take advantage of opportunities to increase our efficiency, especially as our staff is leaner, we need more technology tools. We had a very favorable meeting with them, including discussions of how best to train city staff and an opportunity to have an intern program with some students from Keuga Community College. Our ViewPermit Software and Other Technology Initiative is having weekly work group meetings now. I participated in one of those. That project is still scheduled to go live mid to late May. And finally, we had a meeting as the council requested, kicked off a committee meeting to discuss the vermicomposting project. You'll recall the presentation made by Larson Engineers. Counselor Razika was able to attend this meeting, so too early to report anything on that, but that effort is now underway. That's all.
What did you do on Tuesday?
[laughing] Busy week.
Long week for you. Thank you, Doug.
Secret Resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Reconsideration of Bond Ordinance Number 1 of 2014, authorizing issuance of serial bonds for the city water supply and distribution system. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, do we have a second?
Clerk, I would suggest that you just read the, as we have in the past, just the nine boilerplate articles, please.
Bond Ordinance Number 1 of 2014, Bond Ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $3,400,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of the reconstruction of the city water supply and distribution system. Be it ordained by the city, by the council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows, the City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the reconstruction of the city's water supply and distribution system, including the reconstruction and improvement of the existing water filtration plant and pumping stations, and including the replacement of furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such water filtration plant and pumping stations are to be used at an estimated maximum cost of $3,400,000, and to issue an aggregate $3,400,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated costs of the aforementioned object or purpose. It is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is $3,400,000. Said amount is hereby appropriated thereafter, and the plan for the finance, the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $3,400,000 in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance.
That's it? Yeah, let's end it there.
Counselor Cuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a statement before we vote on this or before we open more discussion on this. Two weeks ago, I requested three items. One, the city manager prepare a report that can be presented to the council at the March 13 council meeting that gives an accurate accounting of our water fund and how to use the various amounts to fund, of the fund balance that would impact the fund over the next three to five years. Two, that another bond ordinance for this project be brought before the council. And three, that the city still applies for the state EFC loan program even though the application will arrive late. The opportunity to pursue 0% financing is something we really need to follow through on. So here we are, two weeks later. Tonight, we have accurate data that shows an accurate amount of money in our water fund balance. We have had analyses presented by our staff. We have had deliberation on how to pay for our much-needed repairs of our water infrastructure. Now more than ever, I have the resolve to support Bond Ordinance Number 1 of 2014 for $3.4 million. Time is of the essence. Of all the projects we plan to do this year, the lower pump and the rapid sand filters are the most vital to our community. They are also the most expensive to fix, and they need to be fixed sooner than later. There are several reasons why we should bond for $3.4 million now. Number one, we can get to work immediately. Number two, we can avoid catastrophic breakdown that will cost us more than we can afford, especially in an emergency situation. Three, the lowest interest rate, possibly 0%, if we can get EFC funding or a loan. Four, long-term financing makes sense for long-term projects. Five, the only one major shutdown to the water system if we, if we bond for the total $3.4 million, if we do this right. Six, it is responsible to continue a, it is, it is, if, it would be irresponsible to the people of Auburn if we continue a policy of deferred maintenance, which if we do not address the water system repairs immediately, we are just deferring the maintenance that needs to be done. And bonding will allow other projects in the capital plan to be initiated without dramatic increases. So what kind of other capital improvement projects are coming down the pike, may you ask? We have South Street repaving and water line, that's $1.5 million. We have York Street, John Walsh Boulevard, and North Street Water Line, that's $1,050,000. We have Walnut Street Culvert, Walnut, Walnut Street Water Line, that's $120,000. North Division, Street Bridge and Water Line, $100,000. We have the two phases of the Northbrook Culvert, which are $50,000 each, and we have the Zebra Muscle Control System Raw Water Line, which is $455,000. In total, it is estimated that these capital improvement projects will cost $3.3 million. That, that is, if we add the capital improvements we are voting on tonight, that is a total of $6.7 million. And that is not including the other projects that Tom Gabeck and the Engineering Department are going to include. So really, it can total up to $13 million. So how are we going to pay for these projects? Our general fund is below where we need it to be healthy. It has taken heavy hits over the last few years in large part to CH, to the CH Auburn CoGen debacle. I do not want to be on a council that raids its funds when it should be bonding for long-term infrastructure. This is common sense and common practice. Our water fund balance has only $1.5 million. Our most important project costs $3.4 million, and we have to pay for another $3.3 million worth of capital projects for the rest of the year. So with $1.5 million able to spend, we have, we are at a shortfall. So we have only $1.9 million, we need another $1.9 billion, if we were to use our funds. Over the last month, the city council has been provided the numbers, the facts, and we are, we are well aware of the capital improvement plan. There is no question, we have, we need to bond for some of these projects. Why not bond for the most important and most expensive of all projects, which is safe, clean, affordable water? As a council, we must support Bond Ordinance Number 1 of 2014.
Anyone else? Counselor Camardo, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, this is an important issue, and our drinking water is very important in the area. We've had three resolutions that I pointed out last week that were very important, that I supported, members of council supported, but Counselor Cuddy paints a different picture here. And we've had deliberations over the last month, and the most important thing that we can do as a council is to make sure we do our proper homework and are provided with the information that is crucial so that we can make good, informed decisions, so we don't have decisions that cost the taxpayers a large amount of money, like was pointed out, like the CoGen facility. But that's our responsibility. We're stewards of the funds of this city for the taxpayers of this community. So I just want to point out a few things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. On March 7, and excuse me, I got to use my glasses, March 7, the manager and our controller reported to council that fund balance was at $157,000. After a long deliberation last week, asked many questions, it was noted this week, and I appreciate all the work that Laura Wills did on, on behalf of the council to come up with a new figure that was handed out this week, and we're at $1.5 million in our water fund. Now, counting standards state that you're supposed to have between 5 and 10% in your fund balance, whether it's general fund or whether it's water fund, that's recommended by the State Controller's Office. So we have far more than that, and it's our responsibility to put that money to good use, something that I want to see this council do. Now, I stated before that I'm fully supportive, and I have been in the past, moving forward on these important issues, but I think that it's more important that we have correct information so we, as a council, can make well-informed decisions and decisions that are not going to cost the taxpayers money. So what I respectfully ask tonight, we've had a lot of deliberation, and it's good that we had a lot of deliberation because good debates bring good results. What I'd like to ask this week, and I know Laura's, Laura's working on this, she's new in that area, and that she spends some time, a little bit more time, looking at the calculations that she's provided with us. I appreciate your help, Laura. There's still some questions that I have that I'm going to be going over with this week, but I'd like to ask that this is tabled for two weeks because I want to see it move forward, and I think it needs to be forward, move forward, but I'd like to have some further information, and I'd like to look at if we took some fun, money out of fund balance and maybe we had some financing, but I'd like to see a different, a couple scenarios. I'd like to see, and then the manager provide to us, the most critical needs, and I think the most critical needs would be the rapid sand filter wall and the pumping station. I'd like to have him provide that with us because I want to take care of the most critical needs. And maybe there's some possibility that some of the, some of the other elements of this recommended that staff needs that we can do in the next, in the following years. And also, keeping in mind, Counselor Cuddy pointed out some things that need to be fixed in the city, like South Street and some of the other improvements that we're, we're going to be looking at very shortly, but I think also, at the time, we're going to be lobbying the state. There's going to be some state monies available for, hopefully, for infrastructure repairs in the future. So I'd like to take our time and make sure we're doing our due diligence as we all took an oath of office to do, to make sure we follow through, deliberate, have good understanding of the issues, and I'd like to table this for at least two weeks and move on with it. But have the manager come back with a couple of options and make sure that we know what we're doing, take some of the money out of fund balance if we need to finance some of it. I have no problem with that, but I think we need to move on with it. I'd like to have two weeks to, so that Lauren can further review our, our numbers, which, like I said before, she did a great job helping us out, finding the mistake that was made. And so I'd like to make a motion that this is tabled for two weeks, we get some information back from staff, and we move on with it.
There's a motion on the floor to table this for two weeks.
Yes, please, yes.
And I would like to second that, and I want to comment by taking-
Counselor, I don't, I don't believe you can at this point, now that there is a motion to table.
Okay.
You've got to go with the motion.
We have to go with the motion, and I apologize for that, but that's the rules and procedure that you have to second it, so we'll have to call the roll on the tabling for two weeks.
Motion to table Bond Ordinance Number 1, Counselor McCormick?
Can I comment on my vote for tabling?
No.
Just vote and be quiet? Yay, yay. No, I vote in favor of tabling it.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
No.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution of that ordinance, number 2 of 2014, mending parking ordinance to add parking meters on West Garden Street. Do we have a sponsor?
Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick.
Ordinance Number 2 of 2014, authorizing amendment to the code of the City of Auburn, Chapter 285 entitled Vehicle and Traffic. Whereas Chapter 285 entitled Vehicles and Traffic provides for speed zones, parking restrictions, and metered and lot designated designation for parking, and whereas Article 5 Parking, Standing, and Stopping, specifically Section 285-14, sets forth parking, standing, and stopping restrictions, and Paragraph A designates where standing and stopping restrictions shall apply on designated streets and highways. And whereas the street designated as Garden Street, now known as West Garden Street, provides a restriction that on the south side, no parking is allowed from State Street to Arterial West. And whereas the City of Auburn is desirous of amending that section to provide for parking as follows. West Garden Street, south, no parking from State Street to the Arterial West. And whereas the City of Auburn is desirous that metered parking be allowed on West Garden Street, and Section 285-18 entitled Parking Meter Zones states in Paragraph A, public highways. Parking meter zones are hereby established on highways as follows. West Garden Street- West Garden Street, north, from State Street to Arterial West, 10 metered spaces. And whereas the current ordinance specifies the number of meters on each street and breakdown of time limits as follows. An additional two-hour meter shall be allowed on West Garden Street, on the north side, from State Street to Arterial West. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that the additions and deletions set forth in this ordinance shall be affected to amend Chapter 285 of the Municipal Code of the City of Auburn as designated herein. And be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Auburn, that this ordinance shall take effect upon publication.
Discussion. Mr. Rossi, this is a simple majority, am I correct?
Yes.
Notice, discussion, clerk, if you call the roll, please. Councilor McCormick?
Aye.
Councilor Kamardo?
Yes.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Resolution number 48 of 2014, approval of live streaming, live streaming of city council meetings. We have a sponsor. Councilor McCormick, seconded by Councilor Kamardo. Council Resolution number 48, 2014, authorizing live streaming of council meetings through the city's website. Whereas in preparation for planning the fiscal year 2013-14 city budget, city staff presented council with information regarding the financial benefits and efficiency improvements of implementing a paperless agenda process. And whereas on January 9, 2014, the council authorized the purchase of the Nova Solutions Agenda Management Software to facilitate the paperless agenda process. And whereas fully implementing the Nova Solutions Program for the benefit of public consumption requires integrating the software into the city's website. And whereas the option exists to provide live streaming of city council meetings as part of the website upgrade required to integrate the Nova Solutions Program. And whereas the live streaming of city council meetings would be a service the city could provide to achieve additional openness and transparency of city government. And whereas the funds for implementation of the Nova Solutions Program were budgeted in the city clerk's fiscal year 2013-14 budget, and software and equipment needed can be purchased within the current budget allocation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, authorize the purchase of additional software and equipment required to integrate live streaming of city council meetings with the Nova Solutions Program into the city's website, with associated costs to be charged to the city clerk's department services account number A1410-440.
Discussion. Councilor McCormick.
Just a question, once this passes, what's the timeline for this happening?
Sure. If this passes tonight, we're on track to try to have the website upgraded and have this implemented by the middle of May.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Resika.
What's the breakout cost for this? How much is it, how much is it going to cost? If we, let's say if we had the option, we're doing the Nova Software Solutions and then this added implementation, what's the breakout cost?
Yep. The, integrating the Nova Solutions project into the city's website, combined with a minor update of the city's website, we estimate the cost no more than $5,000. Equipment needed to do the live streaming of meetings, we estimate to cost no more than $5,000. Now, we took a look on the internet, we haven't gone out to look for any bids or anything for that yet. We took a look on the internet, and definitely, I'm going to say no more than $5,000, but it looks like we might be able to get that equipment if we were going to buy just the equipment, probably for a couple thousand dollars. So what I'm thinking is that'll probably go through a company that'll actually come in and install the equipment and stuff like that, so that's why I'm saying about no more than $5,000. And then, the annual, now those costs would be one-time costs, and they've already been budgeted for. The annual cost of upgrading the software with our website company totals $3,000, and that's $2,000 for the new video software required for live streaming. And that's an extra $995 or $1,000 so that the Earth Channel Company, which is the company that hosts our video on the website, they're a partner of our Virtual Towns and Schools Company, which hosts the website. There's a $1,000 annual cost to integrate the Novus Agenda into the video.
So you're talking about $9,000 then?
We're talking about...
With all the, with all the maintenance and licensing and the other fees, it's about 9K?
Well, the one, we have one...
A one-time shot for this year?
One-time, yes.
Right, which is 5K.
Yep.
And then you have about almost 3 to 4K of the other adders?
Increase the annual.
And then, well, what I'm saying right now, we have it taped, and I know this is a great thing to do, but I see some value to it, I obviously can see a value to it alike, but we do have the videographer here taping these meetings, and they are available. We offer the discs for sale. They're streamed, they're on, even on the newspaper website, they're on the city council website. I just think that this is a bell and whistle, that it's nice, it's really, you know, if we had the money and we could just go ahead and do this, I would say yes, but I really have a hard time justifying when we were suited, it's videotaped and put on discs, I mean, they're available. Being in live stream, it means it's there, if they, it's just like on, if it's on live stream, they got to be there onsite, watching it in real time. Once it's off real time, if you wanted to see it now, you got to watch it on the TV or broadcast, which I believe that's offered two times a week, or within two times? Was it Friday and Monday?
Friday and Monday.
Friday and Monday. So, so for that cost, right now, given the condition here, I mean, it's pennies, but I have some, at this point in time, I have a doubtful value here.
Mr. Mason, one second. Maybe you could clarify for some people, like myself and others that may be at home, what exactly would be the differences of what we're doing, what you mean by live streaming? Just for the record.
Sure, the live stream would be, would have the ability to be shown on the website...
Real time.
Exactly as we're here right now. So people would be able to log into our website. There will be a local government access channel built into the website, and they'd be able to open up the window and actually watch the council meeting wherever they're at live. The difference between what we have right now and the new software capability is, right now, on our Video On Demand archive, people are not able to watch it from mobile devices, mobile phones, or iPads. The new upgrade will allow for that to happen, so people will be able to watch the meetings on their iPhones, they'd be able to watch the meetings on their iPads or tablets. That is one thing that doesn't happen right now. In addition to being able to watch it on your regular laptops and regular computers at home. So that's an added benefit to the upgrade. And the other benefit is, if we go ahead and purchase the equipment and everything, is that we would have the ability to live stream other meetings as well. So we could do planning board meetings, we could do zoning board meetings, and we can also start to do all of those different boards and commissions through the Novus Program as well. So over the long term, I think it's of great benefit. Right now, the official way that we record planning board and zoning board meetings is through the audio cassette system that's here, but we could actually switch so that those meetings are video recorded through this program. And we could make the videos available live stream, as well as those videos could become part of the Video On Demand Archive on our city's website.
So we current, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Cuddy, please.
Is it portable to go from, I mean, how, what is the transmitting device like, or is it like stationary? Or will you have like one stationary and one portable? Go over how it might work?
Yeah, it's basically going to be set up, it would most likely be set up right here in council chambers. And it's the piece of equipment that we need that comes with the software is about the size of a cigar box, about the size of a mini Mac computer. And that's what the camera system will plug into. The one-time equipment purchases would be for some additional cameras and things like that, very similar to security cameras, as well as the box that will be required to plug those cameras into, and then that box plugs into the, our encoder system.
I think it's appropriate, it's Sunshine Week, I don't think of anything more transparent than having live streaming for our city council meetings. I think, you know, I, I see, you know, we have the Budget Central on our website, we have, you know, having this be live, another, another way that the public can engage and access what their elected officials and boards are doing, I think is worthy of this kind of investment. I do support the live streaming of this. I also, you know, I, it might be too early to ask, but maybe we can talk with ARMA, Bob Pennefeather, to see if there can be a receiver at ARMA during the times of our meetings so that not only can people watch the streaming live, but maybe watch it on TV. Might be the most watched show in Auburn at that, at that time, so.
Councilor McCormick.
As far as the, how we do it now, the on-demand, I think you've looked at the, there's a way to tell how many have watched, how long they've watched the videos on demand, and it's surprisingly low. I think you've recently looked at it, it's like the first few minutes of a meeting, and then they turn off the, turn the tape off. And now people are so used to immediately with Twitter and Facebook, waiting until even just tomorrow night to watch it is like 10, it's, it's not the same. And if we have the opportunity to not only do this meeting, but all the other meetings that happen here at City Hall, I think that's a great service, and it's well, money well spent to open the doors and turn on the light in City Hall for all these meetings. People really are interested in what goes on, and I think they'd appreciate the online aspect of it.
Council, Councilor Resika.
Well then, we're going to have a redundancy applications. We either, we have a videographer, and if we do the live streaming, it almost says one of these has to go away. So do we go for the live streaming and the live streaming recording and not have a videographer? Or do we continue to have a videographer then, and not opt for the live streaming? I mean, it's, to me, you're, for someone to wait a day, and if they're not watching it on the on-demand, why would they even want to watch it on the, on a stream for more than a couple minutes? I'm just saying, I, I don't see where having it in real time really adds any benefit. It's captured on the tape, every gesture and nuances is there. I, I like the idea, I'm a techno geek, I really think so, but I'm just saying, do we really need this when we have videography? I don't know, one or the other.
That's a good, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not. Councilor Cuddy then, please.
That's a good question, Councilor Resika. Does, does, does it just stream, or does it, is there like a hard drive that records it too? I mean, obviously, that's like, that's a good question.
The encoder box streams, and what'll happen is, it streams and records. And then what will happen is, literally, immediately after the meeting, I'll be able to go to the computer and click on a button, and 60 seconds later, we'll have the digital recording of that meeting. So it's, it's not only is it a, is it a piece of equipment that live streams, it also records. And it'll, it'll record that meeting and store through the Earth Channel software, it'll store that meeting.
Now, the real, the real important question is, how much hard drive space does the, does it have? Because I foresee some very long meetings in the future.
Unlimited.
Unlimited, okay.
You guys can...
Don't tell them unlimited, tell them it's limited to an hour and a half. We have to stop.
So, so what I would like to, I would like to ask, is before we go ahead, there's, let's, let's see, because to me, by adding this, we're adding redundancy. I would like to see a cost breakdown between what we currently use, what the overall projected cost of this is, storage devices, all this. So what I'd like to do is, is until we have all that information in front of us, I'd like to table this.
Very well, there's a motion to table Resolution Number 48. Do we have a second? Having no second?
Okay.
Motion defeated, sir.
I'd just like to get back to our conversation, because I, I think we should move in both areas. I'm just a little worried about if we didn't continue on here, so people could watch it on TV. I know my mom watches it every Friday and Monday night, and then she critiques me the rest of the week on what I did wrong or what I should have done, so, but I know a lot of people don't have the computer access to do that, so, but a lot of people are moving into the access where they want to be on-demand and using this, so I think we should probably move forward with it. I know we're in a tough financial situation, but we got to make sure that everybody's aware of what's happening in their government, which is, you know, taxpayers' community.
Transparent.
Yes.
Transparency.
Can you make sure that that happens, and you start to make the, start to work with ARMA to get a, whether it's a DVD or a hard drive, or whatever kind of media you're going to get to them so that it can be on TV? Because it's essential that it...
Yeah, it's definitely still going to be on TV. Yeah, now, that process won't change it. I mean, the technical, basically, it's going to just, that process is going to go in reverse. Right now, the, they bring it to us, and what, what'll happen is, we'll bring it to them, and then it'll go on.
No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll, please. Councilor McCormick?
Aye.
Councilor Kamardo?
Yes.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Resika?
After listening to, you know, a couple discussions here, and since there's no interest in performing a side-by-side comparison, I will support it in the interest of transparency.
Mayor Quill?
Before I vote, I just realize that once we have our council meetings, if we can't sleep, we can go home and watch everything all over again, so I'm voting.
No, it's only in real time. You'd have to wait for the recording, it's only in real time.
I, I could find something to do, and be... I vote aye.
Carrie.
Appointment Resolution Number 50 of 2014, appointing, I believe it should be a member of council to the Auburn Municipal Power Agency.
You skipped one.
I'm trying hard to get through here. Resolution Number 49 of 2014, authorizing advertisement for bids on the South Street repaving project. Sponsored by Councilor Resika, seconded by Councilor Kamardo. Council Resolution Number 49, 2014, authorizing the advertisement for bids for the South Street repaving project. Whereas the South Street repaving project is a locally administered federal aid project through the New York State Department of Transportation, and by Resolution Number 123 of 2012, the City Council authorized that the city proceed with this project. And whereas CNS Engineers Incorporated was appointed to prepare the preliminary and final design work for the project, and that work has been completed and approved by the New York State Department of Transportation, and is ready to be advertised for bids. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the advertisement for bids for the South Street repaving project, pin number 375458.
Thank you. Discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll, please. Councilor McCormick?
Aye.
Councilor Kamardo?
Yes.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye.
This will be deja vu, we'll be reading this all over again. Appointment Resolution Number 50 of 2014, appointing, I believe it should be a member of city council to the Auburn Municipal Power Agency, am I correct, or is it the next resolution?
It's in the body of the resolution.
Very good, thank you. We have a sponsor, Councilor Kamardo, seconded by, I'll second it for, Councilor McCormick... Counsel Camardo, seconded by, I'll second it for Counsel McCormick, thank you.
Appointment Resolution Number 50 of 2014, appointing a member to the Auburn Municipal Power Agency. Whereas local law number one of 2004 established the Auburn Municipal Power Agency, and the law requires that the agency shall consist of nine members, two of which shall be the current mayor and a current council member, so designated by the council. And whereas there exists a vacancy on the agency for a member of council, and that member shall serve during their term of office. And whereas Counselor Peter Ruzika is desirous of becoming a member of the agency, and his membership is dependent upon the confirmation of the city council, now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby confirm the appointment of Peter Ruzika as a member of the Auburn City Council, and he shall serve in said position during his term of office.
Very good. Discussion? Counsel McCormick.
I realize that it's the mayor, as far as representation from the city councils, the mayor and a member of council. I just have some concerns about that, based on, not concerns about the fact that those two are, but those positions, but the appointment of Counsel Ruzika, he's been publicly stated some things that, I'm not sure if he can represent the city councils. I mean, is he there to represent city council, or just as a member of the public? His, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to look at the bylaws, but I have some questions about...
I don't believe that there are any restrictions.
There aren't.
On the representation, whether it's solely for the city council, as far as their policies are concerned, it's a general appointment which has no restrictions. You serve as a member...
Just a member of council?
A member of the agency.
So, they're not necessarily a voice for this body on that board?
The object of having members from the city council is to really, not so much represent the city council, but to make sure that the actions that are taken are not, are not in opposition to what the city council does.
I see. Well, not that my one vote would matter, but if I could request respectfully, could we table this, so I can look into a couple of things? I'm just not ready to vote tonight on this. I'd like to table it, if I could.
Counsel, in regards to your motion, if you could set a deadline for two weeks?
Sure.
As Counsel Camardo did, so we stay on the voting meeting, so...
Yeah, two weeks is fine.
If that's your request, and a motion to table for two weeks?
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a second? No second, so...
Thank you.
Could I just make a comment, because we're off that, or you got to vote on, I'm sorry.
No, 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 there was not, there was no second for us, so, you know, so there is no motion.
Just two things, when you're representing, a member of council represents the taxpayers' community, represents them on the council, and they also are being representative on these committees that we appoint members to. And it's, it's the members of council who are supposed to be the liaison between the committee and the council.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think they, it all works together. I don't think there's any division there. It's between, I would assume that, and rightfully so, that members of council would come back and keep the council abreast of different issues that are going on in those respected committees.
That's what I would hope, too.
So...
That's why I just wanted a couple of weeks to think about it.
I don't, so I just wanted to make...
Not have my couple of weeks.
Anyone else? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Counsel McCormick?
No.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Ruzika?
I'll have to abstain.
Counsel, you do not.
I do not?
No, this is an independent agency, it's not part of the city departments, per se, and since it's non-compensated also, you are free to vote.
Okay, then I'll say yes.
And Mayor Quill. Before I vote, it, then Zach is here with us at times, it does put a member, myself or a member of council, puts us in a tough spot when a vote is called for in the, in the AMPA, because then it basically, it deadlocks you to vote for that individual item in, as a council member. So, you have to be thinking, and it's a tough position at times, but I think everyone on ARMA understands that, as well as the council members, so I'm voting yes.
Carried.
Appointment Resolution Number 51 of 2014, appointing members of the Auburn Municipal Power Agency. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel Ruzika.
Appointment Resolution Number 51 of 2014, appointing members to the Auburn Municipal Power Agency. Whereas, the Auburn Municipal Power Agency was established by a local law number one of 2004, and its membership consists of nine members, seven of which are appointed by the city manager with the confirmation of the city council. And whereas currently, there are three members whose terms have expired, and it is necessary to have those appointments made and confirmed in order to provide for the full membership of the agency. And whereas a former member's term has expired, and he has moved from the city, and members James Ride and Michael Luska's terms have expired and desire to be reappointed, and whereas the city manager desires to appoint Michael J. Daly as a new member of the agency, and reappoints James Ride and Michael Luska. And whereas, the city manager is desirous of making these appointments effective for a four-year term commencing upon the passage of this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby confirm a reappointment to the Auburn Municipal Power Agency for members James Ride residing at 34 Bird Avenue in Auburn, and Michael Luska residing at 77 Prospect Street, Auburn, and a new member appointment to Michael J. Daly residing at 10 Silver Avenue, Auburn, all terms, for all four-year terms.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Ruzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Financial Resolution Number 52 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2013-14 budget for a transfer to the water revolving loan fund. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Camardo.
Financial Resolution Number 52 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2013-14 budget for an additional transfer to the water revolving loan fund. Whereas the water revolving loan fund is a city-funded program to assist city property owners with the repair and/or replacement of water laterals. And whereas the city council, Financial Resolution Number 43 of 2014, previously authorized a transfer of $25,000 from the water fund to the water revolving loan fund capital account. And whereas there is a need for additional funds to be transferred to the, continue providing assistance towards the repair and replacement of residential water laterals within the city. And whereas an additional transfer of $350,000 from the water fund to the water revolving loan fund is necessary to allow for adequate funds for the continuation of the program. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, providing an increase in the water laterals revolving loan fund, number HF8340.440.002, in the amount of $350,000, by an increase in the transfer to capital water fund account number F9812.904, in the amount of $350,000. And to increase the capital water transfer from water account number HF99.530.002, in the amount of $350,000. Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Discussion? Counsel Camardo.
Doug, could you give some background on this, so folks know what it's all about, and how we passed the 0%? And while you're looking at it, just before, I want to interrupt just one second. I think two weeks ago, we transferred $25,000 to this fund, and shouldn't it be 325 instead of 350,000? No?
It was originally 375.
Oh, it was, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Just for background, this is the city's revolving loan fund to help residents who might have a problem with their sewer lateral or water lateral, which can be fairly expensive repairs, to obtain a loan fairly easily from the city. The loan is repaid either by the owner, if they want to, or it goes on their tax bill and is paid back over the period of five years. The basic program is a 6% interest rate. The council approved a 0% interest rate program for those homes that are involved in the water meter replacement program, because as we've reported earlier, as our consultants go out and contractors go out to replace water meters, they often encounter very old water service laterals, and we really don't want to mess with those, because they are subject to failure. So, this program gives an opportunity for the homeowner to benefit by getting zero-interest loan, that lateral gets replaced under the program, then we can install the meter, and everybody should hopefully be happy with the end result. And as mentioned, at the last meeting where this was considered, the council did approve $25,000, so this is the balance of what was originally requested to fund that program.
Very good, thank you. Discussion?
I spoke with a friend of mine who was involved in the City of Syracuse administration, and we were talking about the infrastructure. Many of us have seen on TV problems Syracuse has been having. He was telling me that just the week or two previous to that, a member of the Water Department brought in a piece of sycamore that was used for a water pipe, and I wouldn't be surprised, somewhere in the city, there isn't some of that. So, Vicky, I'll throw the offer out, if we come across a piece of sycamore, I'll buy that crew lunch, but they got to verify that really is a piece of sycamore, right? Or a piece of wood, all right?
If I may add, one more thing, Mayor. At the council's direction, too, we've developed a administrative policy for the program, and that's been distributed to everybody, to help control the costs of the program, and extend it to as many people as we can.
Call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Ruzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Mr. Rossi, I don't know the correct procedure to do this, so I'm looking to you. I'd like to schedule a meeting, a special meeting, for March 29th at 9:00 a.m., it's a Saturday morning, in regards to a personnel issue. Can we do a resolution on the floor? How do we have to, how can we go about, how do we go about it? Would next Thursday meeting be soon enough for a resolution?
Well, if everyone's comfortable with doing it off the floor, then...
Can we do it Saturday? We're going to be here Saturday. Can you prepare for Saturday?
I don't think we'll have enough time, Counsel.
No, I'm saying this Saturday, we can pass it, you can write it up and have it for this Saturday, to have it for next Saturday.
I'm just not sure that the people involved will have adequate notice to be available on a two-day call.
Two-day, we're talking a week from this Saturday.
We could pass it this Saturday when we meet for budget.
Oh, oh, you're talking, I thought you were talking about, okay, no, no. Oh, yeah, we could do it Saturday.
We could put it on for Saturday.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's fine.
All right. Karen? Thank you. Local laws?
None.
Table legislation? Other business, seward park, lease parking?
Mayor and Counsel, I know at the beginning of the year, you all received letters from the Seward Museum regarding their plans to have a gate into the main parking lot, and some other improvements that they wanted. I just wanted to kind of present a framework, and see if it's generally agreeable to Counsel. I've talked to Andy Robley at the Seward Museum, and this is the concept. We would surrender two parking spots to allow for the placement of their gate in the fence line between Seward House and our parking lot. In exchange, they would take care of the seward park, which we estimate in round numbers, probably costs the city $3,000 a year. And that depends on, you know, whether we're plowing snow and for special events and things of that sort. The, then we would, they have asked for two additional parking spots in the lot for their older volunteers that work at the museum. And they would also propose that we give them maybe three parking spaces on an annual permit basis in the garage. In exchange, again, they would, they would take over the park maintenance, maintain it at least at the city standards, do the fertilizing, the mowing, the hedge trimming, and all of that, keep it open and available to the public, so it's not alienated from our public use. And also, have them provide a, their high-level annual membership to allow the city to take guests to the museum dignitaries and other visitors. And in balance, it kind of works out to, you know, even trade, if you will. So, that's the general idea, so, interested in...
Was that a total of five spaces, or did you trade off two for three?
Well, initially, we think that we're going to have to give up two spaces in order to allow pedestrian access to this new gate. And then they had requested two additional spaces for their senior volunteers, because they feel they'll have problems walking from the garage. And by the way, a lot of this is triggered because, for various reasons, they are no longer going to allow parking on the Seward Museum grounds. And then in addition to that, three parking, annual parking permits in the garage, so...
Counsel? No, I don't have a problem with this. I mean, it's, this is an asset for the city. I mean, this is, this is something that, you know, the local people have a lot of pride in. I, you know, ever since, even when I was a kid in grade school, it was quite often a field trip there, I think this is a, is a very good, you know, symbiotic relationship.
I don't have a problem moving forward with it, Doug.
No, I think, I'll be last to speak unless anyone else wants to, but...
I'm at full support of this.
I'm only concerned that the park itself, there's nothing physically done to change what is there now, unless it's, it has the approval of city council. For example, they decide to put a chain link fence around it or whatever, I feel the council should retain the ability to nix any of that, so...
Yeah, we can build that in, and we were talking about a five-year term renewable, so... Don't we own that piece of property, John?
Yes, we do.
So, we'd have, we'd have rights over it anyway.
Oh, yeah, we would, I think what Doug has discussed is that we would lease it for a dollar, but we can put stipulations into that lease, as far as any kind of major changes or structures are put in there, which would be prohibitive.
At least get the council's consent to do that, if...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can cover, cover those instances, sure.
That's all I have on that.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our two public safety chiefs this evening. First...
Does anyone want to take a five-minute recess before we get started?
No.
No?
I want to get it over with.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Is that a motion?
No.
I'll go.
Okay.
No problem with it.
Five-minute recess. Be back in five minutes. City manager, I'd like you to, if you would, please introduce our, our all over again.
Our fire chief?
Our fire chief.
As I was saying, tonight, we have presentations from our public safety chiefs. We are, you know, two big departments, very visible, they wear uniforms, they got flashing lights, and big equipment, so, first up is Chief Tiger, Chief.
Norm's going to back me up. Okay, what I've got is just a presentation here that makes it a little bit easier for the public to see what's going on. All the counselors, you should have all the spreadsheets. Those spreadsheets, over the last couple of days, there's been some minor changes to it. I've been working with Laura on a couple of things, clarifying a few items, and you'll notice on your spreadsheets that in many instances this year compared to last year, may seem like big differences, maybe plus or minus. Either way, that's because we've gone through, reorganized the budget spreadsheets, tried to re, to put certain items where they are more well-suited in the budget compared to what they had been in years past. So, that was just a little bit of internal... So that was just a little bit of internal housekeeping so that the record-keeping, hopefully from here on out, looks a little bit better and is easier to follow. But essentially, the budget, the, the numbers are what they are here. The first slide I handed you out, also some note-taking with the slides as well so that you can write things down if you need to. This is just a comparison of where we've been at the last few years. Last year's budget was about a $500,000 decrease from the previous year. That's also the amended budget, so those are, that includes the changes that were most recently made. That includes the changes to the overtime, all of those things. The budget that you have before you right now, my proposal right at the moment for 14 to 15 is the bottom figure. It's a further reduction from the current budget, the current amended budget that we're in, very small percentage at this point. Until we get some things squared away with collective bargaining agreements, the majority of this budget is personnel. So until those things get ironed out, the budget is developed around the current staffing situation and the current collective bargaining agreement terms. So that initial proposed budget of $7.7 million, seven, roughly $7.3 million of that is personnel costs or things associated with labor. That leaves us about $434,000 of operating budget. That's all the things that, that we need. That's fuel for the trucks, that's fuel to keep the heat on, the lights, equipment maintenance and things like that. That portion of the budget is down about 30% from last year's budget. I will disclose to you though that that significant reduction, part of last year's budget also included $166,000 worth of personal protective equipment that we were fortunate to get funded through a grant. Had we not got it through the grant, we would have had to try to find that money some way anyway because the protective equipment was at the end of its useful life. So some of the things that this PowerPoint just follows right down through your budget spreadsheets, a lot of these things, salaries, longevity, incentive and holiday figures, those are all part and parcel of the collective bargaining agreements. There's really not a lot that we can do with those until a successor agreement is reached. The overtime figure in there, I put it at $350,000 right at this point, just due to where we're at with staffing, where we're at with contractual obligations and things like that. I think that where we are today, that would be a fair and reasonable figure where we are today. Fully staffed, the department typically would see between $220,000 and $240,000 worth of Uniform allowance, again, is part of the collective bargaining agreement. So once we start getting beyond the personnel costs and we get into the actual operating portion of the budget, furniture and fixtures is at $1,500 a year. And that's just a category that's been put off for, I think, the last three budgets. So a lot of things that really could use some housekeeping are in there and some of that gets down to cabinetry and things like that where the doors are falling off of it and things of that nature. Even right down to items where people bring it in from home, you know, remodel a kitchen, bring in their old stuff so that we've got someplace to put things. So that's to try to secure some of those items and keep things a little bit neater and more secure. Under office equipment, this has changed a little bit from the past, but it includes incidental computer supplies. Occasionally, we need to do an upgrade or an update to the computers. Sometimes we just get into where we need to replace things. So in this case, we've got a laptop in there for our training office. The laptops that we've got have been refurbished or rehabbed, updated, if you will, by Dave Stathis and Linda DiOrio on several occasions and they're just to the point now where they won't even run some of the programs that you try to run in them. Same thing goes for the two PCs. And we had a little bit in there for tablets as we migrate into the electronic inspection process here. We're going to need to be looking to do something with some technology for people to have out in the field when they're doing those inspections. Vehicles, I put it in the slide, I put it on the budget just so that you were aware that it's there. For the last three or four years, that vehicle has been an initial thought in the budget, but obviously had to be, has had to have been taken out to try to maintain the costs. But at some point, it's going to become more of a reality that we have to replace that because we're not going to have, we're going to end up losing a vehicle at some point here where it's going to become inefficient to continue to repair them.
Mayor?
Please.
Can I?
Yes.
What, back to the vehicle, what vehicle is that? Or is it all?
That's not a specific vehicle at this point. I mean, we've got vehicles that are 12, 14-years-old, our administrative vehicles. These are the small, you know, like pickup trucks and SUVs. In total, we have four of those. And the pickup truck we've got is actually a hand-me-down from the dog warden from years ago. It really doesn't suit our purposes. It's, it's not heavy enough to tow the trailers that we've got and it's got two seats. So that's kind of tough for doing some of the things that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our other equipment, which is typically some of the larger items that we have, replacement of items that are worn or damaged are no longer serviceable, which is becoming an issue for us in a couple categories where the manufacturers no longer provide service or parts for certain items. So that breaks down like this. I've got firefighting PPE in here. That's basically the turnout gear worn by firefighters. This, again, might, there's potentially some wiggle room in here. We like to earmark some money for this in case there's turnover in the department. The, the personal protective gear, that's the firefighting coats and pants, the protective ensemble that a firefighter wears to an interior structure of fire. It's got to be fitted to fit individuals. Occasionally, we get lucky when there's turnover in the department and maybe we should hire like that. I'm not sure. Maybe we should just hire based on sizes, but occasionally, things don't necessarily fit new people as they get hired. So that's in there and it's based on what I've been telling the council for a while now is that we typically see a turnover of about roughly four people per year is what we expect. Same things go with these emergency escape systems which are required by law. We did get new ones just recently under the grant, but there's potential that those things may need to be updated or replaced with a turnover in employees. This item here is self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders. That's basically the air tanks that you see on a firefighter's back. This is the cylinder that holds the compressed air. They have a lifespan. They have a finite life, at 15 years, they have to be replaced. So we try to, to spread those out over time. Next year, actually this year, we've got 28 that are due for replacement. We're currently replacing 14 as we speak and this is the other 14. So we're trying to spread this out over a little bit of time instead of doing quite so many. The products or, or equipment for confined space and technical rescue. Our confined space program is a regional program. We get support from the county on this. I just took delivery this week of about $12,000 or $15,000 worth of updated equipment from Quga County Emergency Management to support that system. We got into this program in about 1993 or '94 when the big water sewer upgrade was going on back then. And that was part of, if I remember correctly, it was part of the project at that point because doing the water and sewer work, the municipality was required to have a confined space rescue team for its own workers, its own DPW workers working in those environments. So that's why we essentially started that service back in the early 90s to provide service to our own people, but we're really the only game in town, we're the only game in the county that has the training and the equipment to do that. The county's been good enough to support us in the equipment with that on the large ticket items, but occasionally, we have smaller stuff that we've got to replace. Hazardous materials equipment. Again, the Fire Department is essentially the, the main portion of the Quga County hazardous materials team. We have the trained personnel, we have the equipment. The vast majority of that equipment gets supplied to us through Quga County. A lot of it crosses over. It's not only used for things that you would think are hazardous materials incidents, but sometimes for incidents that seem more minor in nature. I've got $500 in here for equipment because occasionally, things just don't fit into their grants that we need to replace. Nasals, appliances, adapters, $2,000. This basically is just for simple stuff. If you think a firefighter, probably one of the first things you think of is a, is a water hose and nozzle with water coming out of it. So it's a basic need for a fire department, relatively small item. Fire investigation equipment to support the needs of our fire investigators, occasional upgrades to equipment. I've got one ventilation saw in here. We're currently having issues with our ventilation saws. They've been, some of those have been in service since before I was hired on the job and the manufacturer no longer supports them. We've actually been going to the internet and finding used saws and used parts on the internet, purchasing them. And our people have been tearing things, two apart and making one. So it's time we move on and get those replaced. Water rescue equipment, and this is something that we certainly take a lot more care with in the last 10 years or so with the waterway running through the city. It's a potential issue for us. It's a hazard that we need to address. So we've got $2,000 in there to replace equipment that becomes damaged, broken, or in some cases, when you're dealing in the water, just missing while you're training or providing services. Pure Fitness is a real small item, but it's used to support the health and fitness of personnel. We've got a pure fitness program in the Fire Department so that we've actually got pure fitness trainers that are part of the staff that work that program. Master intake valves, this is a water, basically water valve used to control the water that comes into a fire engine from a fire hydrant. They have the tendency to get corroded, worn out. They're relatively expensive and we have to replace them once in a while. So those are in there. Flashlight repairs, kind of goes without saying. Smoke or nighttime conditions, we need to update those periodically. Fire extinguishers are basic fire suppression items and they have a finite lifespan on them. They used to not have up until a few years ago and now they actually have a finite life if they get past a certain age or certain conditions, now they have to be retired. Portable generator and light. We've got some generators and things in the Fire Department that go back again to prior to my being hired with the department and they just aren't reliable anymore. So we'd like to replace at least one of those with a modern unit. Carbon monoxide monitors, these are personal units. There's one assigned to every rig and the purpose of those is when we go in on medical calls, when we're dealing with firefighting situations, they're able to be attached to an individual so that they can monitor the air quality at any given time. They have to be replaced periodically. They have a lifespan of two to three years and they're practically a disposable item in the eyes of the manufacturer. Radio system components, we've got the new radio system. It's been fantastic, at least from my perspective. It's worked very well. We've had very few maintenance issues with it, but we're going to be going into the third year. So we're anticipating to have, to do some repairs or replacements of certain components at some point. The airway suction units are for EMS folks when we have a person, typically an unconscious person, where they've got an obstructed airway that's utilized to clear their airway so that they can breathe. And again, some of the units we've got in service currently are no longer supported by the manufacturer. Hand tools and equipment is basically a catch-all for all the little things that end up getting broken and need replacement. And then the last two items are fire hose, small fire hose and big fire hose. The attack hose is the small stuff that gets pulled off the truck and brought into a burning building. The larger five-inch stuff is the stuff that goes from a fire hydrant to the fire engine. It's actually a pretty small number. In the past several years, we've had a couple grants that actually covered the lion's share of most of the hose replacement. But again, between getting driven over by the general public at incident scenes, fire damage and just general wear and tear, we occasionally have to replace sections of that. This software, software and licenses is new to the budget and other, in previous budgets, it was stuffed in in other areas, I think under fees originally for the last couple of years. We've now got a line for software and licenses. It's becoming a lot bigger part of, I think, every, of the stuff everybody's doing. So we've got a line in there for the GIS software, which we're, we're continuing to move forward with. Our fire reporting software, which has always been in the budget. We're required to do our fire reports, send them to the state, send them to the federal government. That's the software that allows us to do that. And there's a little bit of a variable in here right now with the inspection software. I don't have a firm figure on that right at the moment, what the new inspection software is going to cost us on an annual basis. I've got to work with Jenny Haynes on that and figure out what the long-term costs are. We're going to be hopping on board with code enforcement and utilizing that same system. Janitorial supplies was never its own, in the, previously was not its own line. It is now. Office supplies, again, just for basic stationary supplies that are particular to the Fire Department. Okay, the larger line for operating supplies and maintenance has within it several other lines, identifying patches, badges, stuff like that, that actually identify us as official members of whatever. Some of this stuff is actually required by New York State Department of Health, so that's 750 bucks. We haven't spent any this year, but I think we spent like $1,250 the previous year in that, so. Textiles is just, any cloth stuff and that, that ends up being like the blankets that we carry on the rigs and things like that. It's just a small expense. Sometimes when folks go to the hospital, we don't end up getting the stuff back or at an incident scene if we utilize blankets and things like that, sometimes we don't get them back. Paint hardware and supplies, just for maintenance of the buildings. Hose adapters and parts, we try not to replace things. We try to repair stuff as much as possible, so this is the parts that allow us to do that. Bigger line here is the medical supplies. It's replacement of consumable medical items and replacement of damaged or worn equipment, the component parts of some of those things. A lot of that is worked out with the ambulance, local ambulance company and we get replacements in kind for certain items and then other things we do not. Water rescue gear maintenance, again, just one of those things with dry suits, inflatable boats, things like that. They get torn, they have to be repaired, so that's a line to cover those things. Our hazardous materials expendables, most of the time when we have a hazardous materials call and we, and we utilize expendable items, we typically will backcharge that to whoever's responsible for the spill or the leak. On smaller incidents, we don't necessarily have the ability to do that easily, so. Emergency operating supplies is just, you know, that simple stuff where you have a minor problem, you need to take care of it right away. Got a bad light switch, got to take care of it, things like that. Thermal imaging camera batteries are relatively expensive in and of themselves, certainly a lot less expensive than thermal imaging cameras, but the batteries occasionally have to get replaced. That's a line to cover that. Communications equipment, simple replacement parts, antennas, microphones, things like that for stuff that gets damaged in the field. And portable radio batteries. And portable radio batteries. We're not sure what the life expectancy is going to be on our portable radio batteries at this point. So far, things seem like they're holding up good. Past practice has shown that about three years is about what we can expect to get out of a lot of that type of stuff in the past. We may get lucky and not have to do anything, but wanted to make sure we covered it just in case. Calibration gas for our meters. This is so that a lot of the meters that we utilize for day-to-day calls and even hazardous materials calls have to be tested on a regular basis. Some once a week, some once a month. And it takes special gas to actually do that, to make sure they're calibrated appropriately. It's relatively expensive. Hydrant testing supplies. Again, our annual hydrant maintenance program is part of our ISO rating. It's part of trying to make sure that we've got hydrants that are going to work when we need them to work. And that's just a, a line to cover some of the small items that need to get replaced when we do that. OSHA bloodborne pathogen PPE, this is an OSHA-required items. Typically, it's things like the latex gloves, gowns, face masks, things like that, that you have to deal with when you're dealing with pretty much any patient and in particular, certain patients, we have to take higher precautions with. Pure Fitness supplies, again, that's just going back to the, the health and wellness program that the fire department has for its personnel. Electric and plumbing supplies. That's for minor stuff around the, the two fire stations when we need to fix a faucet, fix a light switch, fix a light fixture, anything like that. Our HVAC system, the geothermal system, and then the regular boiler-type system down at Station Three. These are just repair parts for those items. And, and these things, we've got listed out separately because quite often, if it's a minor repair, our people do it themselves rather than bring in a contractor or something like that to do it. We'll just handle it. We need a faucet replaced, we replace the faucet. So you'll see that there's also a line for, under services. That's when the job gets to a point where we need to call somebody in to take care of it. Foam supplies. All of our engines now are Class A foam fire engines, which means not only are they spraying water, they spray a mix of foam and water to be more effective at putting out fires. And that foam has to be replaced occasionally as we consume it. Forms, fire department-specific forms for the various types of calls we go on, things that we do in the course of business. Fire boots, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Voice amplifiers. When our personnel are wearing their face mask and, and breathing air out of the tank on their back, it's very difficult to hear. Way that we get past that is a device called a voice amplifier that goes on the face mask that helps that person's voice be amplified and more easily heard. They work well, but they're a relatively delicate electronic device that tend to get beat up. SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus, face pieces and repair parts. Again, those are just pieces of personal protective equipment that take a lot of wear and tear. Small engine annual maintenance. This is something we've been seeing more and more, where we're having issues with all of our equipment that runs small gasoline-powered engines with the new fuel mixes that are out there and things like that. It can take a toll on some of our small engines, so we're trying to step up our maintenance of those types of engines so that we get more longevity out of them. Helmets, just part of the personal protective equipment that needs replacement occasionally. We've got a small line in here for gear repair, so that when gear gets torn, burned, contaminated, we can send it out and get it repaired rather than replaced. Chains and blades for our saws, seems like a minor thing, but it adds up pretty quickly. A chain for a chainsaw is about $185 in the fire service to get it so it'll cut through the things that we want it to cut through. And we get one or two good uses out of them before they're junk. And then some minor personal protective equipment things, like the gloves and hoods and things like that, for protective equipment. Fire prevention programs is actually another subcategory now that used to be just squeezed in all sorts of other places. The J-Fire program is a juvenile fire play intervention program that I think Ron Quill as a lieutenant in the fire department started many, many years ago. That program still continues on today where we take juveniles that have extraordinary fascination with fire, run them through the program. They may or may not have actually started a fire yet, but they've been identified as being at risk. So we've got trained counselors on staff that deal with those folks. Our fire prevention and education materials, just the annual stuff that we take to schools and the high-rises and, and the things, things like that to do fire prevention activities. And I added in there vacant building forms and placards, but that's really what we're hoping to do is to fund that out of the funds that are generated through the fees for that program. Just thought it was worth mentioning. Natural gas. I really can't impact that too awful much. We've whittled away at that over the last few years, and it seems like right about now, that's where we're going to be at. Unless we have some major changes in the, the cost of the gas itself. The electric, same way. I think the last year it was in at $40,000, but it's looking like we're going to have usage more around $30,000. So it's in there again this year at about $30,000. Our telephone and other utilities are around 9,200 right now. We're going to whittle that down a little bit. We're going to be getting rid of some cell phones, so that in the next month or so, we'll probably actually whittle that number down a touch. Under our services line, we've got things like our copier lease, which is locked in for two or three years. It's actually a lease on a used copier. Pest control. Not very luxurious, but without it, things can get ugly, so it's in there. Our vehicle exhaust system maintenance, when you go into the fire stations, there are big hoses attached to the exhaust pipes of the fire apparatus. That's actually a Department of Labor requirement. It's an OSHA requirement that those things are in there, so we have to maintain that system. Replacing hoses and fittings, connectors, things like that occasionally. Overhead door repairs. This is just general maintenance stuff. This isn't like fire trucks crashing through the door. This is just general rollers wear out, chains wear out, things like that, just to repair those items. And again, oftentimes we do that. Our, our people while they're working take care of that. If it gets to be too big of a job, we'll hire a contractor in. Building repairs for both Station Three and headquarters, this is just general stuff. The main fire station was built in 1930, and as we put more and more stresses on it with plumbing and electric and just general use, we have to repair things. Recalibration of meters. Our meters that we utilize on day-to-day basis in hazmat situations. Again, we have to test those on a regular basis when they find, when we find out that they're out of calibration, they have to go out for service, so that's the line to cover that. Fire extinguisher maintenance, that's refilling, recharging, hydrostatic testing of fire extinguishers. Our notification contract is the system that we use to recall personnel when there's a significant or major emergency, we have to recall off-duty personnel. That's how we get hold of them, through that. That was an update several years ago. We actually used to have pagers, but that was a pretty expensive process. The notification system actually utilizes everybody's individual cell phones to notify them. Investigation lab costs. They can vary with the year depending on what fire activity is and, and what situations are, but occasionally we have to pay some laboratory costs for for investigation. And I think I may have, that one may be in there twice. Breathing air compressor maintenance. The breathing air that firefighters wear on their back, we got to squeeze that, the ambient air that we're all breathing today into that bottle somehow, so we've got an air compressor at the fire station that does that for us. That has to be maintained. Those air packs that they wear on their backs have got to get tested every year, so there's annual testing that's required. That's the cost to do that. And breathing air testing, OSHA requires that when you're breathing supplied air in that manner, it has to be tested three or four times a year to make sure it's not contaminated. I've got in here annual slate roof repairs. Several years ago, we had the slate roof on the fire, and I'm not sure about the police station, if that got replaced at the same time. But we've been trying to keep ahead of that and not let it get too far out of hand as far as in disrepair. So we've been trying to have a slate roof company come in once a year, check it. If there's loose slate, either take care of them, replace them, tighten them down, whatever they need to do. If we lose too many of those tiles, it becomes a water leak issue in the building. The other side of that is it becomes a pretty dangerous area around the fire and police station in the wintertime with snow and ice and slates coming off the roof. And those, the slate, when it comes off a roof, is pretty much like a razor blade coming off. We've had it go through the roofs of vehicles and things like that, so we try to keep up on that the best we can. Occasionally, we'll get by with 300 bucks for a year. Occasionally, it's $2,000, so. Our radio repairs, again, we've had very good luck up to this point in time, but we're getting to be where we're going to be three years into the system, and occasionally are going to have to do either some reprograms or things like that. Plumbing and heating services. This is just when we have a plumbing or heating or electrical problem that is just beyond what we can tinker with ourselves. Boiler inspections is in there. We have to do those on a regular basis as well. Aerial device testing is the required testing we have to do on any of our trucks with a mounted aerial device on them. That happens once a year. Has to be done by a third-party approved vendor. Hydrostatic testing of our air cylinders, again, the air cylinders that the folks wear on their backs. Every five years, those things have to be hydrostatically tested to ensure that they don't explode on somebody's back. Generator service, this includes generator service for the generator that services the police department and the fire station, as well as the one that services Station Three on Clark Street. And medical waste removal. We're required that when we come back, if we have things that are contaminated with blood, bodily fluids, things like that, those are stored in a safe place and have occasional pickup from a third-party vendor to be removed properly. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning repairs to both stations, $3,500. That's a tough one. We're getting to see where we're having more breakdowns of the geothermal system. Nothing major at this point, but occasional pumps, fans, things like that. So this is money to cover those services. Medical testing there at $700. Some of those things are, are annual or semi-annual tests, things like, especially for people that are out in the field, dealing with people that have compromised medical situations, TB testing, Hep C testing, things like that, as well as if somebody has a documented exposure to something, we have to do follow-up testing with them. The next item is much bigger. It's annual medical evaluations. Those are required by OSHA for any firefighter that's out there has to have a comprehensive medical examination once a year. Under fees, I've got two things that were never really, you never really saw them in the budget, but they were getting squeezed out here and there. One of those things is for a nurse case manager, and that's a, a third-party contractor that we've got that works with our employees when they're injured on the job to help get them medical treatment more quickly and return them to work more quickly. The second thing there is, is a third-party vendor called 207 Resolutions that handles our on-the-job injury claims, handles the administrative side of things. There has been some discussion about changing the way we do business there, and we just haven't quite gotten to where that, that's completely off the table yet. We still utilize the services of that company for more complicated cases. Simpler stuff, you know, if I watch somebody slip, fall, and they break their leg in front of me, it's pretty cut and dry. Other things, we do still send off to the third-party for review. Training. I've got this broken down into a lot of different areas, hazardous materials training. This is just for some update training and things like that. A lot of our hazmat training gets reimbursed by Kyuga County. Our recruit firefighter training, again, as we have turnover, those folks have to be trained at a cost of about $3,000 per employee just for their registration cost and meals cost at the State Fire Academy. So that number's in there for that reason. Conferences and seminars to keep our people up to date on what's going on. New York State Fire Academy classes for the same reasons. Pure Fitness in-service, again, we've got several people that on staff are certified pure fitness counselors. That's to maintain their certifications. Training materials, reference materials, and items that we use in the course of training. Officer development is in there at $2,500. That's barely enough to cover what we need to do when we send people to first-line supervisor training school. In New York State, if you're a career firefighter and you get promoted to the, whatever the first officer rank is in your department, when you get promoted to that level, New York State law says you have to go to New York City for one month of training for officer training. So this helps cover that, as well as some other things that come up here in officer development, which is becoming to be a bigger issue with the Department of Labor, as well as ISO, making sure the officers have training that is in line with their, their job duties. Fire investigator in-service training, our fire investigators are required to keep their credentials up to get a certain amount of training each year. The technical rescue training, a lot of that is the same thing. To be able to stay credentialed and certified to do certain types of activities, you need to do ongoing training. Right now, we're in pretty good shape. The county's helping us very significantly with that, covering and, and taking care of those costs. Incident safety officer training. That's something that we've lagged behind on a little bit, and we're going to try to take, get that taken care of this year. That's come out in several Department of Labor fines in New York State recently where there was inadequate training for incident safety officers at fire scenes. So we want to get up to snuff on that. And the J-Fire training, again, our counselors that work with that are trained, they're, they are certified, and to maintain their certification to provide that service, they have to get occasional update training. And then training equipment. Just what it says, just equipment to support the training needs. Fuel, we've got it $45,000. That seems to be where we're tracking the last few years. It's just a little bump up from where we are this year. I think we're around $43,000 this year. It's a little bump up for next year. I'm not sure how things are going to work out with the new deal with the county at this point. And so we got that in at $45,000. And vehicle repairs and maintenance in at $100,000. Right now, there's the current budget, we're at $97,000 for vehicle repairs and maintenance. Our stuff's big, and it says "fire truck" on it. That makes it more expensive to fix typically, just because it says that on the side of it in some cases. We've got some very good relationships with repair facilities that are, are doing a good job taking care of the fleet. I do have some concerns though, because the fleet's getting older, and three of our frontline vehicles are produced by a manufacturer that just went bankrupt. So acquiring parts is going to be a concern for us as we move forward. That's about it.
Questions? Counselor?
Just a clarification. This is going back to the beginning. The overall, your budget is based on the way things are right now, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and that's, you know, fully well-knowing that we're in the middle of contract discussions and things like that. That's where you're going to see the biggest dent in this budget.
So we won't really know until that's resolved, what the actual budget would be?
Correct.
So this figure isn't anything to go home and put your head on the pillow?
And that may impact even the operating budget as well, in a positive way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Budget hasn't really changed, just the numbers in it over the years.
Mayor and Council next is Chief Brian Nagel.
What I'd like to do is break down this presentation kind of in two parts, maybe three parts. First part, I'll just go over the budget itself, the lines. What I did in the beginning, you'll see on the second or third page, kind of gave you a cheat sheet. I broke each line item down. Gave you where we were, where we are, and I gave you a percentage increase. And on the right, total right-hand side, I gave you basically little notes, where we are, what it's for. The next couple of pages will be the actual lines. You know, we can go through them if you have any questions on that. On my 110 line salaries, it's contractual. We're looking at a 3% increase. What I did this year is I added an assistant chief's position. Present time, I'm the only one in the police department that is non-union. I have, the staff is more than adequate, but it's kind of hard at some points in times when I'm not there, or if there's other engagements that should be attended by a ranking officer or somebody representing the department. It would be nice to have an assistant chief. Sometimes, as far as contractual stuff or union stuff, all my personnel, besides myself, are in the union. They're all in the same union, and it's kind of hard sometimes. I feel like I put them on the spot sometimes when I'm asking them to do stuff, when they have to go against their own personnel. So that's there. If that's something that can be discussed, I have two restructuring plans for that, one with very little increase, and one which will keep the department basically where it is right now, except with the addition of the assistant chief. Sick incentive...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you got ways of offsetting the cost of an assistant chief? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sick incentive, last year, they put us at 35,000. Sick incentive is divided into four quarters. It's $200 a quarter, $800 per person. So that being, put it in the equation, if all being said, and everybody got their sick incentive, the actual number would be the 56, or I'm sorry, 53.6. This year, I'm taking on the part-time, I'm taking on the three parking attendants, the one new one and the two that are work days. So they're going to be added to my budget. Those weren't in my budget last year. So there's, that's the increase there with the 96%. 140 line, that's just an estimate increase, the rate increase. That's why that's 10% higher. My overtime lines, I'm keeping them where they are, 0% increase on all those. The 210 line furniture, it's, you know, it says 650%, but it's going from 500 to 3,700. Reason that's going is we noticed with these officer shooting we had and the homicide and a couple of death investigations, the interview room we do, we tape stuff, videotape it. We've noticed that we need more of, more furniture, basically more for, with other agencies coming in for communications, and so we want to update some stuff. So that's the increase there. And I know it says 650, but it's not a large number. Office equipment. All the copiers, my copier in the patrol unit, it gets used on a daily basis, and I can't even tell you how many copies go through it, but it's thousands a week. That's just about ready to go, so there's my expense there with that one. Vehicles, last year, as you know, I didn't get, we didn't get any vehicles, new vehicles for patrol. And I'll go through that a little bit farther in my presentation with the vehicles. I need five vehicles. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that I need 10 vehicles, and then we'll negotiate, and, you know, you give me five or whatever. I mean, I truly need five vehicles to replace on patrol. These are all marked units. They're not, there's no unmarked units involved in that. On the line two, on the 250 line, other equipment, the increase there, we have a LYNSTAR, it's a printing, every one of you, I think, has a city ID card. Gives you access to the buildings, et cetera. That's become obsolete. We're going to need a new system, the maintenance agreement, et cetera. So that's, I think that's roughly around $3,500, $3,600. That's going to need to be replaced. That's a benefit basically for all city employees. As far as the other one is my computers for my cars, right now, the computers in the cars are running about eight, nine years old. They're starting to break down on me. We've gone through a couple of vendors, and we've worked them pretty good. I've got one that just came back within the last couple, about the last week, I should say, and they're looking at beating the last estimates. So this, we could push this out over a five-year period. Basically, at least at the end of the five years, this latest company would be a five-year warranty, also a maintenance warranty on it, so it works out well. And then at the end of the fifth year, we buy it out for one buck, and they become ours. That being said, with those, with the car computers, like I said, the ones right now are about eight, nine years. So this was pushing, if we go five years with these, we should get another at least three years out of it, four years out of it, before we'd have to replace them again. Off supplies, I'm kind of guesstimating on that, because I believe we're going to go to central supply. So I'm estimating there that we can take a 70% decrease in that. My 412 line, zeros. Gas, basically, it's zero. Electric, same thing. Telephones, we went through that, the utilities, all that stuff, about a 1% decrease on that. My services line, a 10% decrease on that one. Fees, 10% increase, it's $200. Along with the consulting fees, that goes along with the, kind of with the 207C, the PESH. There's things that we have to do now, because of PESH, we have to do audio tests for our firearms instructors, and with our ERT teams, we have to do fit tests and stuff like that. So it's a small cost, and we had PESH down there for, they came in and checked us over and had a few violations, and we, they weren't anything major, but we got them all taken care of, and we're all set with them. Special operations, that fund, I can keep the same. That's my narcotics fund. Travel and training, I'm asking for a 6% increase on that. If, as I go through the presentation, if, if things can happen, might be a little bit more, but right there, that's going to be my, if I send anybody to school, it's coming out of that fund. If I'm sending, and I mean, as far as recruit, too, if we hire new people, it's coming out of that fund. Roughly right now, with the schools that we're looking at, it's running us around $2,600 per person to send them to six-month school. So depending on where we are with that, you know, we could be a little low on that, but we can survive with it. Fuel, I asked for a little bit of increase. Our usage is down, but the cost is up. So I asked for a 9% increase on that. Vehicle maintenance, we can pretty much keep that right where it is, especially if we get the new cars. Questions on that?
I do. Just to go back just for a minute, the vehicle, you said that you only have five vehicles? Is that correct?
Pardon me?
You only have five vehicles?
I'm asking for five new ones.
Five new ones?
Five new ones, correct.
Okay, and what, in, like, now you just have five that they use, or do you have a backup? Or a...
No, no, we have 14 vehicles, I think, 17 vehicles, 14 and three unmarked. These are for the patrol division.
You want to replace?
We want to replace.
Okay.
And I'll, I can give you more than that.
If it's, if it's already in here, maybe it is.
No, I'll go through it, though. I'd like to go through that one.
I do know that, the reason I bring it up is from not getting them last year. I imagine you really do need, they're...
We do need them, really.
Yeah.
Going through the thing here, and I'll give you some examples on stuff that's happened and where we are, and as far as the manpower issue. This is just a page of our mission statement, vision statements, and our values. The next slide is just stuff that, you know, I mean, people think we just write tickets or arrest people, you know. They wear a lot of hats, these guys, and they do, they're very professional, and they do a great job. So it's just not all about arresting and issuing tickets. On the next slide, what I want to do is I want to give you some notable statistics. I want to show you that this year, our calls for service were up 28.9% from last year. Our sex offenders, sex offenses, were up 129%. Our robberies were up 50%. Our traffic stops were up 63.41%. Tickets were up 41%, almost 42. This is, this next stat, I've got a couple of slides down, I'll go more onto this. Officers injured was up 42% from seven to 10. Our OPs, which is Order of Protections, they're up 16%, almost 17% from last year. Drug task force, the arrests are up 84. Actual charges were up 34%. Actual arrests were up 23%. Prisoner transports, that, that would include going to court, county courts, city courts. That's also going to other counties to pick up prisoners, bring them back, and then possibly bringing them back to where we picked them up from. That's up 23%. This last stat here is larceny from vehicles. Prior to me taking over, there really wasn't, they really didn't keep a track of them. Last, this past August, what I did was I made a new category, and, because we've had a lot of car breaks, and maybe a lot of people here have known. So what we, the way the system is, and from 911 and our system at the station, it's kind of not meshing too well right now, as we had an upgrade and it kind of faulted. So I know we had 60, but I know we had a lot more in that. So I'm just showing a percentage increase in vehicle larcenies, vehicle entries. I think it's a, it's a fair, fair stat. On the next page, what I'm showing you here is, I broke it down, was, is we're at a five-man minimum on shifts. That's five men out there on the road for the whole city. You know, and I know some people in the past, or people have questions, you have more people working than that. The fact of the matter is, at any given time, there's five people on the road answering the calls. You know, and as I said in the beginning, we're up, what, 30% or so on calls, almost 30%. We almost handled 30,000 calls. So if we break that down, five-man minimum on each shift, if we go 365 days, on the midnight shift, with, at bare minimum, with five people working, out of 365 days, 128 of those days are 35% of the time, we're with bare minimum five people working for the city. On the day shift, out of the 365 days, 104 of those days, or 28% of the time, we're with five people working on the streets. And then on the afternoon shift, the 4 to 12 shift, again, with 365 days, 151 of those days, we're out there on the street with five people, or 41% of the time. I think if you think about that, it's, 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 it is sad, as somebody just said. Go to the next page.
Can I, can I quickly ask a question?
Sure.
The numbers in the columns are the, these are the people, how many were on, on that shift? The four, 10, 10, eight? Is that what that is?
It's four times in March that we were, I'm just bringing it down.
Oh, four times in March, you were just with five?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Next page, what I did was overtime incurred from the, I said earlier about the, we're up by 40, 42%, I don't want to misquote myself, 40% in that area, and officers injured. Officers injured, 42%, almost 43%. What I did here is I broke it down through the course, the course, I did injuries, and then I did long-term sickness. You know, we've had a pregnancy and, you know, and a few surgeries. So what I did there, I just wanted to show you with a decrease in manpower from this point, you know, because last year, you know, you're, it was gracious enough to get five people, we lost one in the academy, and, you know, I'll go through the presentation here, we're going to lose some more. It's staying at this level where we are at 48 patrolmen. It's beneficial to the city and beneficial to my people. It's a, not only, you know, in the public, it's a safety issue. So through this course here, with these officers injured and the sickness, prolonged sickness, I don't just, you know, I'm not counting here, you know, day or two days, you know, I'm talking, you know, weeks or months. You know, we incurred about $19,200 and some odd dollars in overtime just because of officers' injuries or sicknesses. The next slide, I just thought these were some other stats that would be interesting to people. And the city over the course of the year, suicide incidents, I'm not saying these are actual suicides, but these are suicide, maybe attempts or actual suicides, was 123 incidents over the course of the year. Mental health calls, 292. And the, I'll backtrack here a little bit. These happen every other year, but what's happening here is I've checked over the last year and this year, they're pretty close. We're tracking pretty close to the same. There might be 20 either way, you know, this year, we might be 20 down a little bit from last year, but it's, they're pretty close as far as the actual stats are going. So in fact, you know, the mental health calls, it's quite a few, and these are all, you know, labor-intensive, where, you know, you're talking two-person calls. 292, missing persons, we're at 236 for the year. Alarms responded to, 455, and suspicious activities, which could be somebody calling, saying that there's somebody in my backyard, or I'm hearing something at my door, or there's a, I see a light, anything like that, that's under suspicious activity. Next slide. These are some of the reimbursements or programs that we have. In 2013, prior to my taking over the DWI car, it really didn't exist. I guess they were getting money, but I don't know where it was. But last year, we implemented the DWI car back, put it out on the weekends. In 2013, and I think this is a, is a good stat for people to see, that we had over 100 arrests for the, for the year. I think it was like 104, but more importantly, we were the top, no, not more importantly, we were the top in the county. We well surpassed the county, the sheriff's department, and we well surpassed the state police in DWI arrests, which I'm pretty proud of the guys as far as that goes. Because of that, the DWI program, Lloyd Hoskins, they were giving us $22,000 a year for, for the program. What they did because of our stats and what we're doing, they gave us an extra $3,000 this year to bring us up to $25,000 for reimbursement, and they also gave us extra monies if we wanted to, well, not if we wanted to, what we do is we'll go out on New Year's Eve or St. Patrick's Day or something like that. They're just giving us extra money for reimbursement to go out and do more of that type, roadblocks, if you would. They're gracious enough that if the state police or sheriffs, you know, aren't able to do it, they're allowing us to go out just on our own, and they'll still reimburse us. It's a big benefit to the, to the community and to the department itself. Bulletproof vests, self-explanatory, we were able to locate a grant, and the vests, they run about 800 bucks, 700, high 700s. We were able to secure some grants, and for the four new officers that we've got this past year, they covered the cost. We were upfront, but they reimbursed us. Things I'm here telling you, it's, again, it's, if, I'm looking at a, if, you know, if we reduce our staff, this is, you know, these are, things are going to be affected. You know, next slide here is the buckle-up program or the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee Grants. Last year, we got two different types of grants. One was like a buckle-up, one was an... an aggressive driving. Uh, you know, we had forty-seven hundred dollars, they ordered us last year, we used ninety-five hours of enforcement with that. Uh, we, we produced two hundred and, uh, ten uniform traffic tickets on that, one hundred and forty-five seat belts, sixty-five other various ones. Uh, the aggressive driving program, they gave us ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the guys produced four hundred and ninety-six tickets, you know, from out, as you can see, just different types, speeding, falling too closely, uh, cell phones, passing stop signs, et cetera. You know, there's probably not a person in this room that at one point in time, they've been out on the road at, at a stoplight, or driving along, and somebody's been on their cellphone, or they cut you off, or they ran a red light, and you're all saying, you know, where's the cop when you need him, or I wish I was a cop at this time, I mean, we've all said it, and, and this, this allows us to be out there to do this stuff. So, again, what, because of our production, and, and this doesn't follow suit for everybody else, I, I want to make that clear. Because of our production, the, the traffic, uh, safety committee, what they did is, they almost gave us a ten percent increase in, in funding this year. And, and I'll emphasize that not every other department is getting a ten percent increase in their funding, you know. My, my guys were out there, they were producing over, on an average, two-point-one, two-point-two tickets, uh, per, you know, per event, so these guys were going out in a four-hour stint, and they were writing anywhere from, you know, eight to ten tickets apiece, which, you know, with these committees, what they like to see is about one and a half, uh, tickets per person, uh, per hour during a, a session. So, usually, we run them at four-hour blocks, occasionally, we'll run them six hours, but more than likely, they're at a four-hour block, so we were well ahead of the average, and, and because of their efforts, we were, you know, we were able to get more money, and more funding, to go out there and do what we should do, be proactive, find, find people what they're doing wrong, and, and take care, and, and not everybody gets a ticket, too, so let's, you know, we'll, we'll keep that in perspective, too. It's, we're not just out there writing tickets all the time, we're out there giving people, you know, some warnings, or, or brakes, however you want to, want to word it. The next slide is, uh, again, this is all stuff that if, if manpower is, is, is not kept to where, where I feel we are right now, is, is adequate. The, the next one is, it's union-administered, but as you can see from the list, it, it varies from church organizations, uh, to, uh, benefits, you know, such as, uh, you know, as, as unfortunately, maybe somebody with cancer or something like that, that we hold, that we have a lot of benefits for in the city. Uh, they, they hire off-duty police, and, you know, they want us there, you know, like, Wally's had the, the stuff over here over the, the past weekends. They want us there, they're willing to pay us, or pay my guys, not myself, they're willing to pay the guys, the union makes all the negotiations on this. Uh, Xylem just had, uh, an incident where they, that they got rid of a person, and, uh, he made threats of, uh, of bodily harm to staff, and they hired, uh, off-duty police for about two, three, two to three weeks, and paid him, uh, just basically to sit there and make sure this guy didn't come down, and if, if he did, to take care of, you know, we would have to take care of the business. So, if, if staffing's affected, you know, these are decisions I'm gonna have to make. This is my decision to let these people, to let these guys work these things, and, and you know, and, and it's gonna come down to the point where it's, do I staff the shift, or do we worry about doing these, these off, these events like this? You know, and, and it's not that I don't want to do them, they're, they're all, you know, they're all good, it's, but it's stuff we're gonna have to think about. So, I guess where I'm getting with, on this whole thing, is the levels of service, you know, best, better, better, however you want to word it. Right now, I think with the manpower where, where you brought us up to this, this past year, with, with council and the mayor, you brought us up to and, and hired the people, um, I, I think that the city and, and the people of the city are getting good service. I, I think, you know, could it be better? Yeah, it could be better, but I think we're doing a very good job. I think, uh, every one of you, at one point in time over this last year, have told me that, either from your constituents or yourself, that you, you see more police on the street than you've ever seen, you've gotten compliments from people on the street. Uh, the past two councils that sat here, uh, and the same thing was, uh, they, they told me the same thing. So, right now, where we are at a, at a staffing level, it, it, we're good. Would I like to have more people? Absolutely, I'd like to have more people, just like anybody other department had in the city, they'd like to have more people. But, you know, I, I understand the economics and everything that goes along with that, but I think what, what we need to, to see here is, if, if staffing levels do de- decrease, you know, what's gonna happen? You know, is the sky gonna fall? No, the sky's not gonna fall, but it's, you know, what are we gonna have to do? You know, we're gonna have to adjust to certain things, and if we have to go to a, a, a lower level of service, then we're just gonna have to do things that, what we're bound to by law, you know, and we're gonna respond basically to criminal complaints only. Um, we're gonna investigate personal injury accidents only, or fatalities, God forbid we have them, but, you know, they do happen. Uh, eliminate all non-criminal service calls, eliminate all special divisions, and I'll, and I'll go through some of these to give you a better idea of what I'm talking about. Major crimes consuming investigations, they're, they're gonna take a while, like homicides, uh, you know, we're gonna probably have to farm those out. Narcotics division, probably gonna have to farm a lot of that stuff out to CNET. Uh, we're only gonna have to, uh, training what we, you know, what we're bound by, by law, that's what we're gonna do for training, you know, and a couple of slides down the road here, I'll show you what, what we are doing. Um, and this is what it's gonna look like, harassment complaints, you know, we get them, you know, that's, you know, my neighbor's yelling at me, or, you know, this guy pushed me, or this guy's yelling at me, oh, I think he's, they're gonna do something. If there's no physical contact, we're probably not gonna be able to go. Uh, trespass complaints, if the people are gone, if there's nobody there, if it's just, I think there's some there, we're probably not gonna be able to go. This'll give you an idea here with the motor vehicle accidents. Two thousand and thirteen, not, this is not injuries, okay, this is just motor vehicle accidents, this is just personal property. We handled eleven hundred and thirty-six, in two thousand and twelve, we handled eleven hundred and twelve. We, we won't be going to those, we, because we won't have the manpower, I mean...
Excuse me, Chief, I'm just curious, has somebody said we're gonna cut your budget or something?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just giving you, I'm giving you a good, better, because, uh, as we're going on, I, I'm losing people through retirements, and I want, I want you to know that...
I thought maybe I missed a day or something.
Where we are, I, I, I think that...
It sounds like doom and gloom again.
The level of service is going up. Pardon?
I hear doom and gloom.
Oh, no, it's not, well, it's not doom and gloom, I'm just giving you where, where we could be from where we are.
Okay.
But, what, the service you're getting now, and, and what you've been hearing from your constituents, I, I think that it's important that we put everything in perspective.
That we know what, I didn't know you were losing, I know you have retirements, but it's, I was getting the impression that, I sounded like you were getting a major drastic personnel cut.
No, no, I just, I just want everybody to know where, where things are.
And, and if I might interject, I asked the departments to consider different levels of service, and, so this is probably the first one you've seen in this level of detail.
Oh, maybe that's why...
Just to see.
Because the other ones, we've, we've gotten other reports, or budget presentations, without the, the good and the, or the...
Right.
The best and the better, so just, this seemed to me to be so unusual, from the last two or three we had.
I haven't seen the other.
It's beautiful the way you're doing it, though, Brian, I mean, excuse me, Chief, it's wonderful, but I just wanted to be sure I didn't miss a, a day at, at council.
No. Back to, uh, matter-of-record complaints, won't be doing, barking dogs, uh, anything that's not in progress. You know, a lot of times, we get owners, they ask, say, can you check my property, like, somebody might call, you know, those are gonna be on the back burner, it might not be able to do them. A lot, but what will happen is, people have to come to headquarters, you know, make a matter-of-record complaint, and, or if we can figure it out, we'll put it on the, uh, internet, and they can fill it out themselves on the internet, I mean, the thing here is, we're gonna lose that person, person-to-person, you know, communication that, that, which, which would be a little bit of a travesty. Now, back to some of these other slides I was talking about, as far as the traffic, this all coincides, the traffic safety, if, if, if we're, if we're losing, or if, if we can't keep where we were, then we're gonna lose that funding. DWI car, we'd probably lose it, we wouldn't be able to put it out as much. Canines, I'm gonna have to eliminate canines. In marshal service, we, we pull in about twenty-two, I think it's twenty-two-eight, I've got it in another slide down the road here. Uh, it was at thirty, they reduced that to twenty-two-eight. Uh, that, that program would be in jeopardy. Our emergency response team, we'd probably have to eliminate that. Narcotics unit, we'd probably have to eliminate that. If we eliminate the narcotics unit, and I got some stats on that, that's probably gonna have to be farmed out to CNET, which is state police. Obviously, state police covers the whole state, so, you know, the, the service that we get as far as narcotics, I mean, we, we all know what's going on with narcotics in the city, you know, again, we don't have a, a, a big, you know, any bigger problem than any other city, I don't want to make, it's not a, I, I don't want to make it something bigger than it is, but we do have a problem, and, um, that would be put back a couple steps. Uh, detective bureau, what would hap, basically what would happen there is to be an increase in, uh, in the on-call, like, right now, we have four detectives, one supervisor, one ID officer. Uh, if there's, you know, if, if there is decreases, or if, if we lose and we, we can't replace, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna lose that personal touch, because detective bureau handles felonies, that's basically what they do. So, when they handle felonies, you know, there's more of that one-on-one, that personal interaction between the victim, you know, our, our job is to make sure that the victim feels as comfortable as they can, going through the situation they've gone through, and we don't want to make that any worse, so, it's, it's all prioritization and, and where we stand, so... These guys are on call, they, with the four guys are on call, that's gonna be an increase of thirty-three percent if we lose anybody there, so it's, it's gonna be a burden and a stress on, on, on the detectives themselves. So, uh, this is all, um, all in the packet here, I'm not keeping up for you people. Now, on some things that we've done at the department, on solicitors, and Councilman Cormick probably knows a little bit about this, because she was still clerk when I did some of this. Uh, prior to, prior to me taking over, and, and in the beginning of, of my tenure, uh, solicitors, I think everybody in the room's probably had some of the, uh, energy people coming around through doors and stuff like that. Well, prior, prior to me, what they did was, they did a, a local check, which would just be run through the records of, of the, the city. So, most of these people are from out, outside the city, they're from New York, or they're from Buffalo, et cetera. Uh, so, what I did was, uh, told them that we're gonna charge them for an extensive background check, we're gonna char, if they go through, they're gonna pay for the background check, they go through it, if they pass it, they go to the next step, you know, I approve it, and then they're issued an ID card. They pay for the ID card, the ID card's only good for so long, they're supposed to carry the ID card along with them at all times while they are soliciting in the city, so when they come to your doorstep, all you have to do is say, you know, can I see your ID card? Uh, if they refuse to give it to you, or anything like that, you know, you can get a plate number, whatever, call us, and we'll yank the ID card, and, and, and nothing's refunded to them. This is, uh, it's proved, it's, it's, it's worked out well, you know, we, we've, we've turned out some people with some felony DWIs, some felony mischiefs, some burglaries, and some sexual misconduct, so, because of what we've started to do, not just by local checks, by doing the, the whole, the criminal history, th, these are the people that we've weeded out, and they're not at your doorstep at this time. You know, I mean, you guys expect to be safe, and that's our job to, to ensure that you are as, as best we can. Another thing that we did is, or, uh, did here as far as revenue, I mean, our job isn't to, you know, we're a service provider, but, uh, what I did was, uh, implement Carfax incident, uh, for the accident reports prior, prior to me. Um, what was it, through May thirteenth, September, through September eleventh through May of two thousand and thirteen, uh, the police department took in a total of five hundred and ten dollars in revenue, uh, from accident reports. Uh, I, I looked at this a few months back, along with my records people, and, um, it didn't make any sense, you know, insurance companies are calling, and they, they want accident reports, and they want this, and what we were doing is, we were sending them out to them, they were charging them a quarter, uh, we were paying for the stamp, we were paying for the envelope, and then what have you, and they were making money. Uh, so what I did was start charging the, the Carfax, and, and as of right now, um, I think we're at thirty-seven hundred dollars, just for less than a year that we've pulled in, in new revenue. You know, I, I'm not looking to make money, but I'm looking to cover the costs of, of the work that my people do in records, they're, they're busy, they do a good job, and this is covering the costs, this is covering our expenditures. Uh, maybe we're making a little bit, I don't know, but, uh, we're definitely covering our costs. With the ID cards, you can see here on the ID cards, thirty dollars, we're charging for the ID card, twenty-five dollars for the background check, so far this year, since we started this, and we haven't, this has been going, maybe since August, we've taken in thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. Is a lot of money? No, it's not a lot of money, but we're not losing money, and that's the big thing, you know, we're, we're not, we're not flipping the bill for other people to come into the city and do business that probably most people here in the city don't want, have anything to do with. And we're also doing it for some other towns. Tonto Senate has contacted us, and they're, they're asking to have eighteen, uh, of their people to, uh, fry ID cards. Again, I want to prefix this one by saying, as far as the, the traffic, uh, criminal aspect of it, uh, you know, we're not in the business to make money, but part of making arrests, traffic tickets, parking tickets, there is revenue that comes back to the city. It was projected this year, as far as parking tickets, is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, I think when that, I don't want to misspeak, or, or step on anybody, as far as that, I don't mean anything by this, but we didn't have the third parking attendant at the time, we got him later in, later in the game. So, right now, actual revenue from the, the parking is at ninety-one thousand, um, traffic slash criminal, which comes from like city court, um, that was projected at a hundred and seven-five. Right now, uh, we still got three, four months left, right now, we're at ninety-five thousand, so we're tracking a lot higher than where we should be on that, so, um, with the new hires and stuff, we're, and with this, and we're able to do these, uh, different sweeps, warrant sweeps, and, uh, with manpower, it's helping out a lot, so these are, these warrant sweeps, these traffic details, this is all part of, uh, part of the equation. Next page, go real quick, I wanted to show you that, uh, even though last year, I, I gave, I think I gave you quite a bit of money, or savings, I'm still trying, uh, what we did this year, Linda Diorio, she's been a, a great help, she's doing a good job for us, as, as far as the computer systems are going. We had a, um, a website that we were paying six thousand dollars a year to. Uh, it was out of, it was down towards the city where this person was from, I discontinued that, and, uh, we're seeing a six thousand dollar saving on that. Some of the other eight, um, departments here in the city, I think they took advantage of this, the, the copier lease. Uh, we, we go through copiers, I mean, we use a lot of paper down there. Um, you can see on here the, the nicer, the, the savings we had on those seventy-five, we've saved, the numbers are right there, we saved twelve hundred, forty-nine hundred, et cetera, so, we're doing our best on that. Uh, the, our postage machine, I guess we're going to, again, we're going to central supply. Um, I'm gonna discontinue that, that's a fourteen hundred dollar saving, so, over the course of the year. Uh, with some of the, uh, computer systems we have, and with, with Linda and Dave's status, what I've done is, uh, I've, I've taken a group of guys, the newer guys that are more computer savvy than myself, um, we've trained them, and Linda's trained them, and Dave's trained them, and, and what we're able to do there is, uh, example is our Live Scan, which is a, a state, it's where we do all our fingerprinting, and it goes through the system, and it, it comes through different checks. Uh, prior to this, they used to, um, we'd make phone calls, and it would be, it could be a day, two days, that the machine was down. Because of Linda and Dave, and, and the, uh, the new guys, the, the excitement that they have for the job, they're, they're willing to take on the task, and, and they're, they're making the, uh, they're troubleshooting the problems and solving them within basically minutes, saving us time, money, and, and putting people back out on the street, and not having, not, not having to take our people and take arrests, maybe out to the state police, or out to the sheriff's department, which is gonna take me more time, and stuff like that, so it, it's worked out quite well. Computers in the vehicles, like I said, they're, they're getting past due, you know, they're eight, nine years old, but what we've done there, we've had another couple guys that have stepped up to the plate, and, uh, instead of going, taking them down to Finger Lakes, and getting charged, whatever they charge, which is, is pretty hefty. These guys have taken on the task, and, and they're fixing computers, and they have no problem doing it, and we're saving that way. You know, I'm going so far as, I highlighted this one, replaced photo evidence cars. These are just little cars that the SD cars go into, they're little, they just fit in there, we put them into evidence, they had lines on them, and I was checking prices, and if I took the lines off those little cars, we get them by lots of ten thousand, and we go through them. I mean, so I checked it, and if I got rid of the lines, I could save two hundred and sixty-six dollars a lot, so that's what I did. With our vehicles, instead of going outside the city and staying inside the city, that's working out, you know, it's working out well, very well. Our turnaround's great, they're giving us discounts on, on labor and on parts, so that's working out quite well. Last year, I told you about the ERT, and that was new, so this has been a whole year since with ERT. It's a minimum right now, I'm saving because of the MOU, Memorial of Moon Standing. It's, we're saving about twenty-five thousand dollars there a year in overtime. SROs, we did the same thing, we just finally came to agreement with the MOU with the SROs, and we're saving a minimum right there of twenty-two thousand dollars a year in overtime. We're using FlexTime, what have you. And then on another one highlighted, the CD sleeves, we're saving sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents a package of a hundred on those. We go through them, I know it's not a lot of money, but trying to save money. Then on intangibles, we closed the women's cell block down completely. Talked with the city court, and I just think it's, as far as liability and stuff like that, I talked it over with Mr. Rossi, and I think we're in agreement that it's, in the long run, it's gonna save us, or potentially save us from some type of litigation down the road, so they closed the cell block down. We don't have a matron, we, you know, it's, it's not a good thing to have the guys go upstairs and with a female at three o'clock in the morning and check to see that she's all right. Not that she wouldn't do it, I don't mean it that way, but it's, it's not a safe thing as far as she can, she can make any claims that she wanted to. Next slide, I'll just go through a couple things. This is on overtime, I told you I kept the overtime where it was from last year. These were some unexpected things that happened during the course of this year. We had one death investigation, and you might have seen it in the paper on Francis Street. That ran me about twenty-five hundred dollars. We, obviously, we had the presidential visit, and that cost thirteen thou- a little over thirteen thousand in overtime. We had a homicide back in September that cost me almost eleven thousand dollars in overtime. And then unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, as far as the officers concerned, we had an officer shooting back here in February, and thank God the officers were safe, and that ran about sixty-seven hundred dollars in overtime right there. You know, these are things that I just can't, you can't predict, it's just, you can't predict. Other savings we did, or we had, was the hiring of the five new officers. Again, we lost one in the academy, just because from top pay to bottom pay, starting pay, there's about a hundred and eleven thousand dollar savings, maybe a little bit more. Longevity, which they don't get as a new officer, that's a ninety-two hundred dollar savings. And then here's where I'm getting, as far as the good, better, bad, as far as losing people. I lost one, I lost the one guy in the academy, we just hired one back in February. So depending on who you want to say he replaced, I'm, I lost a guy in January, I lost a guy, I'm gonna lose a guy this April, I'm gonna lose one in June, and I'm gonna lose one in July. Fleet, this is a breakdown of the fleet. I'll just go right to the, what we did over this last year. Vehicles in the department traveled four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty miles during the two thousand thirteen over an eight point six square miles, which the city covers. The five BEAT cars, which would be the north, southeast, and west, and central car, they, they took up two hundred and three thousand of those miles. So we're averaging on each car, a BEAT car about three thousand miles a month. Lifespan of those cars are about two years. You know, once we get past the two years, then the maintenance gets to be, you know, it's, it's a crapshoot on that as far as maintenance. Department vehicles, if they're still in decent shape, they're passed down to other departments. I'm not gonna bore you with these next ones, but these are, these, all these on the next couple pages that you have in your booklets, these are all repairs that are quite, you know, frequent with these, with the vehicles. Take them past the two years, and we're gonna go and, you know, the expense is gonna get, it's gonna get bigger. Again, we have a great relationship with, with the dealerships that we're working with as far as the repairs. We're also, you know, we're shopping around at the different vendors in the city as far as where we're buying our parts and seeing who's giving us the best deal. So, you know, it's, I'm not just taking somebody's word. Training, I know it's getting late. What I've done with training this year, I, last year when I, when I took over, I told you training was a big part of my career, I, I think it's, it's, it's just necessary, it's invaluable. What we've done since I've taken over and implemented a steady training officer, we've increased the number of instructors in the department to teach, you know, teach our schools and go to other schools, you know, and that's firearms, general topics. If some of you might know and you might not know, what I've done is I've started doing schools here in the city. Qugus Centers up there, they've been gracious enough to let us use their facilities up there at no cost. They have a nice facilities up there as far as rooms for teaching. So what I've done, we've helped sponsored two or three classes already, different schools. It's, it's revenue, but what I'm doing with that money is putting it right back into my training, which allows me to put my people through better training that maybe I couldn't afford before. You know, my, my goals or my, my dreams would be that if we could, you know, someday have a training facility right here in the city. You know, we've got the, we've got buildings and spaces for it, and maybe at some point in time it could be combined with the fire department or strictly police or just with other agencies. I've got some, a couple guys, or one, I'm sorry, one guy going through with K-9, that he's gonna be certified to be able to teach K-9 courses. So the, what we can do is endless, because we do have the personnel, we've got some very smart people down there that do us justice. On the bottom of that page is just some things that we do, and the following page here, this is just a list of all the training that we've done since April of thirteen, and it's, it's a lot of hours there. You know, the, the state mandates us just to, for bloodborne pathogens, your shooting, and defense or taser, and use of force. That's all that's mandated. We try to give, I'm trying to give as much out there as we can, it's just gonna make us that much of a better department and help us with liability. Next page, these are just some agencies that we, we deal with, and we have people involved regularly with, with their programs. Again, this is just, you know, if, if things, you know, the good, better, better, worse, these are things that would probably have to be cut. Marsh- the next one is the marshal detail, same thing. You know, there, we have three hundred and thirty-four active warrants right now in the city. But with this program right here from the US Marshal Program, it allows us to send a group of four, a group of three out there. We rotate them every three to four months, and we base that on, on the production of the individual officers during the course of a year. It's not just, I want to do it, okay, you can do it. It's, you know, they, they have to have a good standing with the department, and they have to be productive in, in what they do on a regular basis, on a daily basis throughout the department. So that, that's how they're picked. It's, it's kind of a reward for them. BEAT configuration, I just want to go over this real quick. When I first took over, on a weekly basis, I have my, my shift commanders give me an update weekly on what's going on in their shifts. And probably at first, they thought I was, it was just nonsense, but what, what I was doing was checking to see where all my calls were, and if I needed to do something different. And, you know, and what I found going through all that was I needed to reconfigure my BEATs. You know, it is, obviously, it's, we have more business downtown now, you know, we see more people down there, and it's good to see, and there's, there's more building down there, and hopefully there'll be more. So obviously, with that being said, people are feeling a little bit more secure with where we are as far as security firm, as far as the police force, and that, that's a good thing, you know. On the, on the flip side of that, if, if that, that mood changes, then, you know, maybe business doesn't stay there, or maybe it moves or whatever. But right now, it's, it looks good. So this was our old BEAT configuration, and I know it just won't mean, you can look at it in your own packets, and then we just changed it. There was a, really, it was a, it was offset quite a bit by the different BEATs. Right here, the DARE program, narcotics, like I said earlier, depending on where we are with manpower, you know, in the next year or two years, and these are some things that might have to be eliminated. I already talked to the superintendent as far as the SRO program, it's not something I want to do, but it's my understanding that, I think it's, I don't know if Laura can tell me, but I think it's eighty-three percent that on one SRO that we fund eighty, eighty-three or eighty-seven percent, and then the school does fourteen percent on one. They cover, basically out of four, four SROs, they cover seventy-five percent, we got twenty-five percent. So I've already talked to the county about that, and if, if I'm forced to, I'll reduce. The one that we're taking most of the cost, I'll just put that person back on patrol. Not what I want to do, but, you know, I mean, I, I want to keep the BEATs in patrol where it's adequate, and I feel that it's safe for the, for the people. Same with cop program. I'm sure we're all aware that the Housing Authority, they're seeking to make a six million dollar addition down to Merriman Street, down there at Malone Village. You know, that's gonna be twenty more units down there. Our CLP program, it's, it's, it's an important program, it allows, and it's flexible. If there's a problem wherever Brogan Manor, Malone Village, or the neighbors are complaining someplace, you know, we send that officer down there, or officers down there, and they, they stay down there, and they, they try to take care of the problem, and most of the time they do. I think with the, if this goes through this addition right here, more and ever, we're gonna need this, this CLP program or allow me to do it. So it's, it's, it's an important part of the, the process here to, for the public. We're specialized. I told you about the ER team, we had four incidents last year. I told you at one other council meeting, we had shots fired that we assisted up at the lake. It turned out all right, basically, you can read that on your own, but the incidents, every incident we've been involved in, we've had an apprehension, and there's been no injuries to staff, and there's been no major injuries to the public. There might have been some minor injuries to the, to the bad guy, but I don't think there was too many. Commercial vehicles, we added two more officers this year to that program. You know, there's been talks about closing landfill in the near future with that, you know, if that does happen, obviously, there's gonna be more truck traffic through the city. You know, it's a, it's a safety issue. I mean, we've all been on throughways or highways and been next to a tractor trailer when it's throwing up water, and you can't see, and maybe they don't have the mud flaps, and that's, they, they have to have them. So I mean, it's just stuff like that as an example. It's a, it's an important program, and it helps keep the streets safe. Next slide, sex offenders. I'll just go through these quick. I went through this with you last year. Not much has changed, I'll probably just go right, I've got one officer that manages sex offenders. Okay, most, seventy-five percent of the sex offenders in the city, they're not on parole or probation. So I've got one guy to manage these people. We've got ninety-nine sex offenders in the city. We still deal with parole, parole's down at our, is down at the police department. They run out of space twice a week. We work well together, they're, we work very well together. It's, what's nice about having the parolees down there, which one would think it is, is that it gives my guys the opportunity to put names to faces and faces to names, you know, because the population of the, it changes over, and there's quite a few parolees. Right now, we got ninety-four parolees in the city besides the sex offenders. We got a hundred and eighty-three probationers in the city. And when you look at the last map I've got there for you, it's, comes out to three hundred and fifty persons in the city that are either on parole, probation, or a sex offender. So it kind of takes up that whole map. Then the last thing I just want to bring to your attention is the homeless population in the city. And we've talked about this at department odd meetings and stuff like that. There, there is an increase, you know, we're finding people under the bridges and stuff like that, and we do have a contact, and we have a good contact as far as they'll come over and help us out and try to put these, you know, find these people places to stay. But, you know, we are having problems with, with the homeless too, some of them. Not all of them, but some of them we're having problems with, you know, as far as crime-wise and nuisance. So, you know, we, for a while there, we were dealing probably every other day with, you know, the same people. So it's, it's gonna become a prob- it is a prob- not, it's not a, it's not an epidemic, I'm not, you know, call out the guard, but it's starting to be a problem, you know, along with everything else that we're dealing with. And I think that's it. I think I've taken a lot of your time up. Any questions?
I think we're set, chief. Thank you.
Very thorough.
Counselor, your turn, other business?
Is, sir, did you say, is there any other business?
It's your turn. Do you have an active for other business?
I do.
Please.
One is, two weeks ago, Friday, Ignite had their winter fest, and I neglected to mention it last week, how wonderful it was. And it was amazing. Downtown Auburn was like, I don't know if Chief Nagle want to hear this, it was like Bourbon Street, he doesn't want to hear that. But it was really wonderful, and also, I'd forgotten to, in addition to that, they are celebrating their ten-year anniversary, and I was gonna ask if counsel would want to recognize Ignite for not only the anniversary, but the ten years they've been in, in the city, in the county, they've done a lot of things to, for the community. They've just done so many different things to help everybody, raise money. They've, they've, they hosted our debates even, they've done that for the last few years as far as I know. But they're a really active, great organization, and I think we should do something to recognize them.
Counselor, you may, you may not be aware of this, but we are, we have started working on a proclamation with Dan Lovell, I believe is the chair. We've started working on that over the last two days, and I know there's also an event scheduled. I do not have it in front of me.
Oh, the fifteenth of May or April?
I, I don't recall what day it was, but I know that's on the schedule, so.
I remember when they were first starting ten years ago, and, you know, as being much, much younger back then in my thirties, I, I, I found it very welcoming that there was young professionals trying to really get people excited about Auburn, and they were continuing to do so. They're politically engaged, they're socially engaged, they, you know, really, as you had mentioned, very much about making Auburn a welcoming place for young, young professionals and young families. So, so I would like to offer my back that support.
Oh, great. Well, little did I know you're way ahead of us, Mayor. I should have known that, sorry.
I can't take credit for it, but we're working on it.
Okay. Another item I have, last Saturday, we had our first budget presentation, and Corporation Counsel was part of that, his, the budget for Corporation Counsel. And the, the line for other services includes a payment to outside law firms that, that support us. And it was a lot, three hundred thousand, no?
No, no, to the outside firm?
Outside firms.
Almost a hundred thousand, between ninety-five and a hundred.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to propose is that we freeze it, freeze spending in that area for anything possible, including contract negotiations, which is something I only, that's the only thing I know personally that we could possibly get a handle on. It's, it's about fifty thousand now, I think, to, for what we've been doing. I would like to propose that if anything came up that we, I'm not sure how to go about it, if you need a resolution or what, but it's, it's too much that what we've been spending, I think, as far as that one area goes. I think we've got enough, if we can save somewhere, that might be a place to save or stop spending anyway.
Hopefully, counselor, some of that is not going to continue into the next fiscal year because of the matter with the Cogen plant, that should be finalized. The contract negotiations, as you may know, as the manager has discussed, that we started with the CSEA, and that's being done in-house.
Right.
But we're sort of in a quandary with the fire contract because of the stage that it's at, and the police have not started yet. So I think you've got to consider those elements, and unfortunately, we don't like to see these excessive fees being paid on that line, and we have done many other things in-house. But we'll continue to do so, but I don't think, quite honestly, we can't freeze it at this point because we've got unresolved issues. But we'll try to keep them at a minimum.
Just seems like the, this one in particular would be something we could handle in-house, but maybe something we can talk about if it's, I just wanted to identify it, if we're looking for places to save, we can start now, that this whole entire, between the, the overtime and the legal fees and all that, it seems like we've got to just stop the madness. It's money that I think we didn't need to spend so much. It's money that I think we didn't need to spend so much in the first place, so maybe that's why it, it comes out, it jumped out at me that.
Looking at it.
Okay, all right, thanks. I've got a couple more things, I'll try to be quick. The, the audit committee that Doug had in place, the city manager, is that a temporary committee, is that done and over? Is it, or is that something that?
I, I created it based on the recommendation of our outside auditor.
Okay.
And I created it to be expeditious as opposed to coming to the council to ask for the creation. I pretty much considered it to have completed its work at the end when it delivered its audit report.
I see.
The idea was to discuss possibly replacing it with a board appointed or somebody appointed by the city council.
So at this time as we speak, that, that panel or ad hoc committee, they're no longer considered committee?
In effect, and in fact, one member, the mayor resigned or made it known that he wasn't interested in continuing.
Okay.
I wasn't interested, I just felt, shoot, we should share the duty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just curious if that was an ongoing annual kind of appointment, which kind of leads into my next question, may, not even a question, email, it's, and it's under the Sunshine Week. It's, it's about emails, under the Sunshine open meeting theme for the week, I know, I think we've talked about this before as a council, 25 years ago there wasn't email, so this wasn't a problem, but if there's email communication among five city council members, four and the mayor, that I think is considered, it's not, it's not supposed to happen, it's considered a meeting, isn't it?
No.
If I email?
It can be considered a record, but there are certain exemptions.
Okay.
That if you send me an email on legislative business, that is not subject to foil.
It's not subject to foil?
No, no.
So if I send, if Doug sends me a, a recommendation and copies everybody and we communicate back and forth, is that foilable or?
Generally, I would say, without knowing the content, generally not.
Not.
Because again, it's, it's discussion of legislative business, but something outside of that, again, it's a record and it could be foilable.
It seems like we're conducting business without the public when we're doing this.
You got to be very careful with email because if you're conducting city business through email, then that creates a problem.
I agree.
Well, yeah.
And if you're given, if you're given direction to the city manager or to any members of staff as a collective group, then you've, then you start, there starts to violate the open meeting laws.
It depends on, on what the content is.
Well, it's generally good to advise away from that and it's just, that's the, all my, all the research that I did on it, I think that's advisable to, if there's any discussion that needs to be happened, it happens here on the floor or an executive session or a special meetings called and we can get together to do that, but I would advise myself at least that that doesn't, that doesn't happen.
Well, the, the reason I ask is I haven't participated, but we are getting emails, which I, I appreciate the communication from the city, from City Hall to us, but if one of us comments and the other one comments and the other one comments, then we're, I think we're having a discussion about a city issue and I just don't think that's what we should be doing, so I've not replied, but I've thought about it. I just think it, we've got to think about this, how are we going to handle, I've got one email in mind that there was nine exchanges back and forth between staff and a city counselor and all of us saw it, but what do we do? Can we bring it up in council, shouldn't we bring it up in this open meeting?
It's covered in the law. Counselor, what my office will do, will go through the various requirements of the open meetings law and will try to delineate for you what's acceptable and what is not acceptable and what is subject to freedom of information and what is not.
I know that it's, you've got nothing else to do, but I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but I just think it's very frustrating to not be able to contribute to something and then a whole bunch of decisions have been made and we haven't had anything to do with it except for maybe one person, that I think is not.
Just keep in mind that whatever you're doing, you're making a record of some kind.
Anytime you're doing it, it's a record.
And some of it may be subject to the freedom of information and some of it is not.
I don't do anything, an email that is. My next question, should I stop while I'm ahead? No. The, the radio bill, the county bill that we owe for the, the radio system, where are we with that?
We still owe the county $409,000.
490, okay, I just thought I'd ask.
Yes.
I'm done.
We're going to talk about that at the meeting, aren't we?
We did have it on the agenda for the joint meeting that has been postponed due to conflicts.
The, the joint meeting is?
Right, with the county.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd make a motion to pay it, but I probably wouldn't get a second, so I'm not going to.
Getting late, isn't it folks?
I do, I have something to bring up.
I want to.
She still has the floor.
Done.
Counselor.
I, I believe that the council would benefit from some kind of, or the city should benefit from some kind of, like, I guess, mission statement and, you know, to provide focus as, as to like, you know, where we want to see the city, I guess philosophically and, you know, financially, I mean, not just financially, but just something where, what do we vision, what do we see the city, where do we see the city in five years? So I would like to request or suggest that, you know, myself and anyone else interested in trying to come up with a, a statement and some goals and objectives that kind of outline what, you know, where we see Auburn three to five years from now and then once those, that state, that statement or, or objectives are, are, you know, outlined, we can bring it before the council so that we can, you know, have ourselves be almost like, try to be responsible to, to, to guide us to that common goal of Auburn's success. So that's, that's, that's a suggestion.
I'm keeping quiet tonight mayor.
I wasn't looking at you, I'm starstruck. Counselor Zeke, do you have anything?
Very briefly, I'd like to.
One second, Counselor Cuddy, were you done?
That's it, mission statement and some goals and objectives for this, the city.
Excuse me, Counselor Zeke.
No, that's okay. The, one thing I, I really think we need to do and it was one of the recommendations of our, our audit committee was, was to start a five-year financial planning. We're in the budget right now, to me this is a short, you know, if we're just doing a budget, if we're doing it year by year, it's, you're only looking at the short term. We need to start looking more down the road for, for long-term sustainability. I mean, we need a five-year financial plan of what we're going to do and how we plan to, to, to improve the city's financial picture and I really think we need that.
Counselor, to address that, I, I know one of the topics, one of the big topics when we hired Mr. Selby was a five-year plan. And the trouble in the, through no fault of his, but through the, the lack of a comptroller, that was pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. Now with Laura on board, I would hope that we, we get back, get that going.
It's currently on the list of expectations I've given to her. I think it's, it's a matter of time, she's been here about a month and, but it's on, it's on the to-do list and trying to make it as much of a priority as I can, but other things come up, especially during the budget period here, so I, I agree with you and I, and I think it's something we do need so that we actually have a model and we can do what-if scenarios with the council. So for example, what if, you know, we do raise a certain amount of revenue, what if we do get certain provisions in labor contracts, things like that, and then forecast them over the, the subsequent five years, so.
I, I think that that could be done internally now, I mean, with, with our staff.
I think so, although Laura and I haven't gotten together on if she would need some support for that plan, but it would fit in, I think, to a large extent with what you were talking about, with some kind of a, you know, vision where the city wants to be in the next five years, we could try to, you know, do that kind of financial planning if we knew where the council wanted to see the city, besides obviously just being physically solvent, but you know, what kind of community are we trying to create?
And, and one last thing, I really think in light of what was gone through with the, the water fund, I, I really have to say that we need to have an operational audit for the next, before the end of the year, for the, instead of a, the audit type of audit we had, I think we need to go through the full operational audit. Things were, not to put blame on anybody, but it looks like to me like some of the information was just, it was there, but somehow or another things got misapplied.
Mayor, excuse me, I just think that was because we didn't have a comptroller, simply that's.
You're supposed to do it every three years.
An operational?
I wasn't going to get involved, but we're going to be talking about the water fund in next week or the following week, so.
Sure.
I think all this should tie in and I have some recommendations that I'd like to talk to council about, so not to put it off, but.
Okay.
I do think that we need to have some further follow-up in light of the certain things that happened this past week, so.
Anyone else? I'm going to ask if there's a request for executive session, I strongly suggest against it. I think a four-hour meeting is, is very enjoyable with our two chiefs and everyone else, but I strongly recommend against it, so at this point, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for executive session?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry to do it, believe me, I'd just soon go home too. But there are two matters that are very important, one has to do with collective bargaining and the other one has to do with the appointment of personnel.
Very good. This time I entertain a motion for executive session, Counselor Cormick, Counselor Camaro will second it for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Camaro. Would you call the roll for executive session, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Zeke?
Yes.
Aye, we'll be in recess for executive session.